Welcome everybody out to planning and zoning meeting. We'd like to start our night with the pledge of allegiance. I'll ask Commissioner Woodhouse to lead us in that.
Oh.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dave, did you have your agendas that you printed out? Can I get a copy of that? Apologize for being a bit late tonight. We had a work session before the meeting that went a little bit long because one of the commissioners had a lot of questions. Our first item of business tonight is the review and approval of last month's minutes. Do any of the commissioners have a chance to review that? And if so, I'd take a motion.
Yeah, it looked good to me. I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Have the motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Those will go, those will be recorded in the official minutes then. Our next item of business is an annexation, amended annexation policy plan adoption.
Okay, so this item is referring to the annexation policy plan. So Spanish Fork is amending, or is proposing, sorry, to amend that. The annexation policy plan is a state requirement that is intended to show where states plan to annex in the future. So every time I come to you guys and say, we have an annexation that fits inside this, that's inside of our annexation policy plan, that's the requirement that I'm referring to. So this is kind of a long, multi-step process. We're on the first one today, first step, which is the affected entities meeting. So up there you can see a list of the eligible affected entities. So it's the county, adjacent municipalities, special service districts, state services, and public utilities. Those are the only eligible affected entities technically. And so if you go to the next slide, I think, yeah, so this is the, a rough timeline, assuming that we hit all of these dates here. But after today, a 10-day comment period begins in which we will get comments from affected entities and pass them along to you guys for you guys to consider, you know, depending on what they have to say. And then you guys will make a recommendation to the council, and the council will decide if they want to adopt it or not, and then it will be passed along to the county. If you go to the next slide, here's my contact info. So if for any eligible affected entity, feel free to reach out in any way and give me your comments about the proposal. Then if you go to the next slide, so this is the proposed annexation policy plan map, very similar to the last adopted one, only one minor change. That up there is being proposed to be added. So tonight, essentially, you guys are just discussing what you think about that addition. There's no formal action, just a discussion. And I believe, and Joshua, correct me if I'm wrong, eligible affected entities can comment tonight, technically. I think they're allowed to talk, but it's not a public hearing, so it's just a discussion, essentially. So, any questions?
Do we have anybody else who wants to speak on the matter? You're saying it's not a public hearing, but do we have any other affected people who want to talk about it?
There you go, yeah. And you guys can talk as well yourselves, so.
We have one person raising their hand. If you'd like to come up and tell us who you are and what your comments are, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening. My name's Chris Creer. I'm here representing Springville City. I've just been asked to come and relay the message that in preparing your proposed annexation policy plan, that the planning commission, according to state law, shall attempt to avoid overlaps with the expansion areas of other municipalities. And the area that was circled previously is currently within our expansion area, according to the plan we've had since 2011.
So on that, I'm guessing that Springville is wanting that area north of the highway that goes through there, is that?
Well, this is just an area that's within our expansion.
For the whole, that whole blue strip, is that all within?
Yes.
What Springville's?
Yes, it's within our current expansion.
Okay.
And that's all I was here to inform you of?
Give notice?
Yes. Yeah, so that's pretty much it. So, thank you so much.
Does AMBA from staff want to comment back to that?
Yeah, I appreciate the comment. It's understood both that the overlap exists and that the state code indeed does reference that as something that should be considered.
So if an annexation comes with that, how is that handled between if two cities have an area within their growth zone?
Between Spanish Fork and Springville, it's not uncommon at all for that to be the case throughout much of the area that we're talking about, both on the north and south sides of State Road 77. There are lands that are in Springville's annexation policy plan that have already been annexed into Spanish Fork. So in those areas, not only do we have overlap, but Spanish Fork has acted on that overlap and has annexed properties into Spanish Fork City. So I guess, to be real direct, we haven't viewed that as a concern so much in the past. Spanish Fork City has put a lot of consideration into two things, the desire of property owners relative to what community they'd like to be annexed into, and whether or not we, as Spanish Fork City, can provide services to properties. So I'd say those are the two things probably that are driving decision-making, as I understand how the council's looking at it as much as anything. Indeed, this process that we're going through here with at least the proposed amendment to the annexation policy plan that has been contemplated since we were first approached by the property owner that would be the most affected by this proposed change. And it's not the first time we've done this recently, just three years ago, it was done to accommodate lands that were eventually annexed into Spanish Fork, adjacent to the area that's proposed to be part of the amendment that's before you tonight, and that will be again before you in November. So on one hand, I don't want to make it sound like it's really routine, and certainly there are procedures and processes, and there's guidance that's provided in the state code that I think is not only important, but critical that we follow, and we're doing our best to do that to make sure that the city council's given an opportunity to decide on whether or not to amend the policy plan or not as proposed sometime in November, I think. Ian, is that right?
Yeah, correct. The, the public hearings with the planning commission and city council are both tentatively, I suppose, scheduled for November.
Does that help?
Yeah, great. Thank you for the background on it. Commissioners, any comments, questions? So what are we being, what are we looking for, to approve the amendment?
Tonight? Just, just for information?
For information?
Yeah, essentially, this is just the, the, you could call it the kickoff for the comment period, and then no formal actions required. That you guys will make a recommendation come the November's meeting to the city council.
Ian, how, how do we accept comments for this?
I, so my contact.
Okay, so you'll get them directly?
Yeah, so, or anyone at our office can take them, and then we can pass those along to you. But yeah, I guess ideally, comments are directed towards, towards me from our office, and then you can pass it along from there.
In my view, it's kind of like we used to talk about, to the planning commission in care of, so Ian Munker be the, the collector, and we'll pass those comments on to you as we receive any.
Okay. We'll move on to our next agenda item then. The next one's the item five, development agreement, the River Meadows Town Home amended development agreement.
Thank you. What I'd like to do is present both five A and six A together. One is the development agreement, and one is the amended preliminary plat. And then at the end of the presentation and public hearing, we'll then have two separate motions, one motion related to the agreement, and then one specific to the plat. I do apologize, we have a lot of slides. Stop me at any time. We do have the applicant here, potential home builder here, engineering firm here. So any questions you've got, please feel free to ask them. So first off, this is the area we're looking at, Arrowhead Trail, South Main. Previously was called the Sky Meadows Development. If we go to the next slide, this is the general plan. Let's go to the next slide. This is the zoning that was put in place in 2021 when the master development was approved. It had many different elements to it. One is the commercial corner. Here on the north end of the project, there is the apartments, single-family lots to the south. And then what we're looking specifically at is the townhome phase tonight. Let's go to the next slide. This is just another map indicating the zoning. So the way the townhomes are laid out, it falls primarily in the R3 zone, but a portion of it does overlap into the R4, which was necessary for the apartments. Let's go to the next slide. This is the exhibit, and why this is coming before you tonight is the applicant would like to amend the existing development agreement, and the, and the reason for that is they'd like to increase the number of units in the townhome phase. And then with that, they would be updating some of the exhibits that are currently in the agreement, such as the layout plan, which you see here, and then elevation standards that are currently in exhibit. And we'll kind of show both the existing and proposed as we go through this. And so then the second item is the amended plat approval that would go hand in hand with that. Next slide, please. This is what was approved. As you approve a preliminary plat that has phasing, you work your way through those phases. This is the last phase. The final plat for it was approved last year in 2024 with 150 townhome units in the layout that you see here. Let's go to the next slide. In the agreement, we had exhibits that displayed the type of townhome product, materials, design, et cetera, that were expected to be built. There was wording in there to that effect that would require something similar. Let's go to the next slide. The next four are different elevations of, of those same products. So this is currently what is in the agreement. Next slide. Go to the next slide. Sorry, I think I put these out of order, so caught me by surprise. This is a wonderful drone aerial photography picture that was taken. Obviously, this is over Main Street looking to the southwest. What you see here are the apartments. Here is the edge of the commercial corner. Just out of the picture is the new quack-quack car wash, and then off in the distance you can see the single-family portion of the project. Let's go to the next slide. This is looking to the east, towards the river bottoms. And as you can see in these slides, Cowpack recently was realigned. It'll now intersect, as shown, maybe with Arrowhead. Let's go to the next slide. I don't expect you to read this. This is just the addendum to the agreement, just to point out that the agreement, once it was adopted, it has been modified. This would be the fourth addendum, and as stated, it's specific to the unit count, layout, and elevations. Let's go to the next slide. Next slide, please. This is what has been submitted for your review. What hopefully stood out is the street layout did not change, and largely the footprints of the building did not change. How this is possible is going from a wider unit to a narrower unit. And so in some cases, where it used to be five units, they have now added a six unit, largely within the original footprint. Let's go to the next slide. This is the landscaping plan. I included this just because it's a little more clear as far as some of the streets and open spaces. We do have a robust amenities plan for the open space that's centrally located. Here you can see the connection, this is connection to Cowpack. Del Monte is over here. This is the new road, Summit Drive, that connects to Main Street. Let's go to the next slide. Next slide, please. This is part of the improvements to the site. There is fencing requirements. Where the property abuts existing properties, there's going to be a masonry wall required. Other places along Arrowhead, and for some of the amenities, you'll see the wrought iron fencing. Let's go to the next slide. This is an exhibit showing the completion of fencing in an earlier phase. Let's go to the next slide. Within the amenities package, we do have the clubhouse with a pool. This is indicating the architectural design for the clubhouse, and then this is the pool house for the equipment. Let's go to the next slide. This is just showing us the layout. Here, oh, go ahead. This is the amenities plan, so if you can picture back to a few slides, clubhouse is on the north. Next to it, you've got pickleball courts proposed. Then in the center, there is a playground and pavilion area. And then to the south of it, it's not shown, but there's a large open grass area. And then to the south is the dog park. Let's go to the next slide. So now what we're looking at, and this is the, one of the main things we want, your input, if you have questions. Ultimately, at the end of the night, we are looking for a recommendation from you on both of the items, the plat and the agreement for the council to consider. In the project, there are two different, three if you count, there's a, there's a two-unit, but largely it's rear-loaded, and then there are front-loaded product. Let's go back real quick to the landscape plan, and we'll just highlight where those are. Back one more. Keep going. So anywhere you see that, the shared alley driveway, the rearload, and then down here, we've got some of the frontload off of Cowpack of note. Those all have 20 or more feet for their driveway. That does count into meeting the parking requirements. Let's go forward now to the elevation. So what we've got here is the proposed changes. Keep going. Back one, please. So this is the frontload product, and let's go forward. All of the units are going to be three-bedroom, two-bath, two-story. They vary in size. I provided the sizes in the staff report, but be happy to go over those if you have any questions. Of note is, as you go with the narrower unit, the garages still meet the dimensions for the garage requirements of, of the city, but very, very narrow. Let's go to the next slide. This is just a different optional layout. Keep going. So these are the frontloads still. You can see we've got different materials being applied. Towards the end, we do have a slide that shows an example of some of the different color boards. I only included six, but there was more provided. It just gives you a sample of, of how the different color patterns might be applied to the brick and the vertical board and batten and the siding. Next slide, please. This is the rear of the frontload units. Next slide, and then we've got the ends. And we can go back and forth through these if you have any questions. We're now on to the rearload product, so predominantly, the majority of the units will be this product. Let's go to the next slide. Keep going. One more. These are the 3D elevations. Once again, we've got the materials called out. This, this one adds the additional wood paneling that you can see highlighting on the ends. Let's keep going. These are the different, a, a sample of the different color packages that you might see color boards. Let's keep going. So once again, we've got two separate motions, one which is specific to the development agreement, and then a second motion which is specific to the plat. I just wanted to note, we do have, are missing some commissioners tonight. We did receive an email from Commissioner Warnock. I believe I forwarded it on. She had just mentioned that she has some questions about the amenities and how staff goes about ensuring that the amenities of that quality are installed. Usually with the final plats, we do require the manufacturer's specs and details so that during construction, we know exactly what we're anticipating to go out and see when we inspect. So what we see now is an example of the quality of what will be built, and then we just confirm with the final plat that we have the details for, for that. She also did share a comment on the elevations. She felt that some of the, the end units could have more character. She felt like it was too much of a blank wall. Let me just look at my notes real fast. One thing, this item did go before the DRC this morning. The Development Review Committee did recommend approval on both the agreement. With that, there was some question about public safety and, and the design and layout. This is based off of an earlier plan that was approved in 2021 with no real changes to the streets and the alleys. So that, that concern was noted, but the DRC did recommend approval. With the plat, there was discussion on with the final plan, with the final plat, excuse Looking for a phasing plan, as it's currently proposed, the project, townhome portion of the project would be completed in one phase, and so we were hoping the applicant would provide a phasing plan as it relates to landscaping and timing of the amenities so that there would be some of that completed earlier in the project and not necessarily towards the end when all the units are already built and occupied. Any questions for staff? Otherwise, we'd like to invite the applicant up, and then just a reminder that we would need to open this for a public hearing.
I have a couple of questions. Do you, do you have the ability to show the previously approved site next to the, what's being currently proposed? Could we put them side by side on the screen? Or is that not an ability?
We could do it. I believe I emailed them to you.
You did.
If you wanted to.
I can do that on my screens at home, but I don't know if I can do that.
Do you have your email that you could send to Josh?
I could.
Or, hold on, let's give him a second. He might already beat us to it. So page two is the previous layout, or the current proposal, excuse me. And then this is the prior. So I think if you pull them apart into two separate, and then window one to the right and window one to the left. Josh clearly has the skills and training to be running the.
Impressive.
Projector.
Now can you enlarge it just a little bit on each side? Great.
Oh, you're on the wrong page.
Wrong page. There you go.
There we go.
So previously approved, approved on the left, what's before tonight?
Previously approved on the right.
On the right. Sorry, thank you. And what's available tonight on the left? What's being presented tonight on the left?
So what you see, for instance, is on these units. Additional one has been added here where you had one break. You've now got multiple breaks with additional unit added.
No changes to, I assume that this is parking that's added in this phase? Is that correct? Or is that just, is that already existing?
That is garages, detached garages that are going to be, meet the parking requirements for the apartments. Why it is shown is there was a timing that had to take place when Cowpack could be abandoned and relocated, and so that has kind of held off the construction here on the hillside. But now that that's been rerouted.
Alignment.
That's fully underway.
We can still kind of see that alignment there, it looks like, but.
Is that where the masonry wall, will there be a divider right there? Is that?
No. Where it's within a project, we did not require a masonry wall. There will be a masonry wall here between the townhomes and the commercial corner. There is a masonry wall down here with the existing residences, as well as those on Cowpack. Along this border, there's a wrought iron fence, and then the rear of the detached garages double as the retaining walls, if I'm correct. Thank you.
I understand, but a lot of parking questions here. So do we have any room to park in either the entryways, whether it's front-loaded or rear-loaded?
This is just my personal opinion. The way it's laid out, where you have a shared alleyway, driveway, whichever you'd like to call it, that limits the entrance and exit to these two points, which on this side of the street where you have the front-loaded product with the driveways, obviously you have no opportunity for street parking. But on this side, where it's the front of the rear-loaded units, that opens up this entire side of the street for on-street parking, which in, once again, in my opinion, most owners and guests are probably going to find that to be the most convenient. If they're not parking in the garage, they'll just pull up to the front of the unit and be able to park there.
Okay, so it depends. Okay, so that, that would be the only thing available there in terms of if you're rear-loaded? But even front-loaded, there's no room for street, other than street parking, there's really no room for parking in the driveway?
Correct. So we discourage and prohibit the, the parking here in the alleyways. Those need to be kept open. Interior, each unit has a two-car garage, and so you'd have, like on this alleyway, you'd have the 12 garages facing onto the shared alleyway. It's hard to see, but there is limited parking at the ends of the alleys, and then we do have a parking bank, a, a adjacent, excuse me, to the clubhouse, and then you do have another parking bank here. But then once again, street parking is available in, in places that we do not have a conflict with the driveway.
And we understand this is part of the same project. Is this parking available to the, to these residents, or would this only be for apartments?
I would assume the HOA for the apartments would prohibit that. There is a connecting stairway and a connecting sidewalk. I don't know that it's ideal for someone to park down there.
And those are detached garages also?
These are detached garages, but there is a parking lot for the apartments here.
So that, okay, so there's a separate HOA that runs this? That's a separate project or the same project?
I believe there's a master HOA for each phase.
Yeah, so the apartments have a property management?
Yes, we'd like to pick it up on the microphone.
You can state your name, please, for the record.
Joseph Ernest. Good to be with you. To answer your question, Paul, the apartments are going to be property managed. The townhomes, one of the big changes is they're going to be for sale now instead of for rent. I'll give you more context on that when the time comes, but it's a, it's a really big change. They used to be for rent, 2,500 square feet. Now they're going to be for sale, three-bed, two-and-a-half-bath. And the end units on the frontload are actually four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, but we can get into that, but the, no, they're not. There's also a huge grade change from the townhomes to the apartments. It's one of the reasons we thought to do a wrought iron fence, to preserve the view. I think there'll be a view up on that plateau where the townhomes are. Instead of having a solid wall, me, Dave, and Brandon thought a wrought iron would be better there as well.
Okay, so with those being separately managed, even though it's a simpler, or same project, it's sort of the for rent, you know, for, that we're talking about. it's sort of the for rent, you know, that we're talking about here, and that's, that's their parking.
Yeah, and it's.
Functionally separate with the.
And functionally, because of the grade change, it wouldn't even, I don't think it'd be pragmatic to share.
Okay, that answers that. Thank you.
Brandon, bring it up?
Yeah, I have some more questions for Brandon, thanks. Changes, do you, do, have you or staff analyzed what changes besides the count? Have we lost any parking of the amenities? I can see that amenities look to take the same space, or does look to be a few, some minor changes to sizing on some of it. But what, do you have a list of the changes that this is making?
Parking is still met. Each unit has a two-car garage.
Still met, but has it changed? That's what I'm asking. I mean, it's, it's meeting, I understand this project still meets the requirements for R3. Has it changed from what we approved previously to what it is being presented now?
Yes, in the sense that you see the parking field expanded next to the amenities, which is appropriate.
Added more units, so it's expanded.
Ideally, you'd like people to walk, but you may have events here where people are going to drive and park. And so that did increase. Other than the unit type, elevations, I do not recall any other changes.
There's an amenity change. Commissioner Mitchell, there's been an addition of a playground and a pavilion barbecue section.
Where at?
In the middle of the amenity, in the middle of the amenity section. It used to be just courtyard, which is kind of ambiguous, not really, kind of more like an open space. We've decided to add a playground and a pavilion barbecue structure. That's, that we think is an enhancement.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff before we hear from the applicant?
I'm just wondering the driveways from garage to road on those? I'm assuming we're going to count that as parking, how?
So the front load, yes, that's their driveway to park on. The code, what it calls out is per unit, you need two and a half spaces. Garage obviously counts as two, and then the half is towards guest parking, which should be dispersed through the project. And so we do have, obviously, the large parking banks here, and then the parking here and here. And so, yes, the driveways obviously would count towards meeting the parking requirements.
Anything else?
Any slides that you'd like us to go back? Otherwise, we'd like to invite the.
Well, we'll hear from the applicant and then open up a public hearing. And then maybe we'll go through, who knows, where we'll go after that.
Thank you.
Somebody for applicant, Joseph, you. Anything you would want to add to what the staff has described? Or any other points? I thought your point on being a for-sale product was, was a good point to bring up any other topics that you'd like to address?
Yeah, yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity.
Say yes, sir.
See that, Todd?
I heard that.
Happy to be with you. I'd rather probably be on that side, for what it's worth. I'll bring up, so the, the original development agreement was approved four years ago. Since then, we've had the, we've had a really hard time finding a builder for a 2,500-square-foot townhome for rent. Just hasn't worked. So we, we were able to team up with a nationwide builder, which is Meritech Homes. They're publicly traded under MTH, and they've been able to give us a great product. It used to be a single building footprint that was all the same size without variation. We're now variating the, the size of each building footprint with three different variations, which we hope will be aesthetically more pleasing. And the entirety of the project and all of the units now fit within the existing building footprint from before. It's actually 8,000 square feet less to fit the, to fit the new units in. And the ask is 24 additional families in this location. The underlying zoning, I know it was mentioned, there was a R3 and R4 underlying zoning. The ask is 174 families, units. The underlying zoning would accommodate 201. So we think with the thoughtfulness of the site plan, the way in which it lays out, the increased open space, increased amenities, the adequate parking is what we hope you, you, that's what we think, the adequate parking. And we think the community really goes well together, even, even with 174 units. Also, as far as the location of this project, I know that there's a, I know that housing shortage is a big deal. The federal government has even considered a national housing emergency, and I know Governor Cox, it's a big deal. I know for the city of Spanish Fork, it's also a really big deal. We submit reports to the state in all the ways in which we are being pro affordable housing. And in this location on the, on, next to Arrowhead and next to Main Street, on the, on one side, you have Salem's Retail, on the other side, you have Spanish Fork's Retail of Main Street on both. And then you have the I-15 corridor and the rec center being right there for these families to enjoy. It seems to me that it makes a lot of sense to add them, to add an additional 24 units. But also that it's really because with the additional units, I foresee that the project can move forward. It can be built, and I can, we can, we can continue the project and make it beautiful. I will say, it was not our intent to make the elevations worse than before. So the develop, so if we could bring up the front view of the rear load elevations. Also, as far as the exposed end units to Shauna's concern, I would just add that there will be trees, there'll be landscaping on the end units as well, which will help. But also, we're, we're open, like we're, we're open to, the front view of the rear load, right there. So we have the white brick, we have the wood paneling, the board and batten, and the siding. Our, our intent was to make it as appealing as before. In fact, there's more variation in the actual building footprint now. So in so, in some ways, I, I, I think it's better. But it was always our intent to, to make it as good, if not better. And same with the amenity, amenity package, we're trying to make it better, to make it an easier decision for the city. That said, if you could go to the, the amendment to the development agreement?
And one thing to add real quick while you're looking at that. So for those end units, to address your concern again, you'll notice there's two different types of end units. The, the more plain side will only be for when two buildings are upright against each other. So they're really close, they're not very visible. Any street side, any street view side of those end units will be the more enhanced side elevation.
So what's your, on that space? What's, what's that setback between one building to the next? Is it, how, how far apart are they?
The distance between the buildings?
Yeah.
I believe it's 20, is it 20 feet? Yeah, 20, 20 feet.
And that, so that property will be maintained by the HOA? How does that?
CCNRs. Yeah. So to what I was going to, if you go to page two of this amendment? So the, this amendment was reviewed and approved by Vaughn, the city attorney. I worked with him on that. And one of the things that we try to do is, we try to give the city teeth or discretion here. And how we've done that is the elevations paragraph. The townhomes in Phase Four shall have elevations that are of similar exterior finish quality of those shown on Exhibit F, as reasonably determined by the administrator. The administrator is actually the city, just so you know, that, that's a defined term in the development agreement. And then, exact replication of any specific elevation shown in Exhibit F is not required. Meaning, again, the way I interpret that is, it's the administrator's discretion. Again, we're, we're not, we're definitely, no one here, including Meritage, is trying to provide a less amazing elevation rendering. It's just not the intent. But overall, we think, we think the community works really well. It goes from a really unaffordable-for-rent product, that's 2,500 square feet, to a 1,350, 1,450, 1,550, and 1,650 townhome product that's for sale, all of, all of which, except for some of the end units of the, of the townhomes, are three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath. And then some of those end units, end, end units on the front load, actually four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath. The other part of this is the apartments are only one-bed and two-bed. So I'll point that out. So as a comprehensive whole.
The apartments.
The apartments next door. Yeah, the apartments next door are only one-bedroom and two-bedroom. And then you have single-family homes as well. So we'd like to think that, that the whole project works well together for that. It has different, different product types. Also, it becomes a much more affordable for-sale solution. I will point out, only because it was brought up in the DRC, the CCNRs won't allow for more than 50% of the units to be rented at some, even like in the future, 10, 15, 20 years from now, if investors come in, the CCNRs won't allow it. Also, they won't allow a lease that's less than six months as a term. So there's not, we're not going to be dealing with some of the concerns that I, I think a city might have.
How does, how does that get enforced?
See, the, the owners, they're, they have, they have a right.
So they'd have a right to perhaps, at least if someone were moving out or vacate, vacating, they could veto that sale? Is that right? Or how, how does that work?
See, I didn't.
I guess, so you're saying 50% would have to be, is it owner occupied?
Occupied, yeah.
So if, so if the owner was, needed to move for some reason, they were right at that 50, how does that, how does that get enforced? I mean, like.
The owners enforce it, in HOA.
Yes, but if, so if Paul's owner occupying one unit, he's moving, selling that unit, I'm buying it to rent it out to somebody from him. Where does that, how does that get policed, is what you're saying? How do, do you stop that sale? Or how does that get notified to the HOA?
Yeah, I, my understanding is the HOA would have, would, would track it.
So, so they'd have to understand what the next intended use is from?
For sure.
Todd, if he.
You got it. And, and every, every owner in there has a right and a benefit of the CCNRs. So every owner is, can enforce it themselves, too.
And another way that comes into play is if there's a loan with that purchase, then the, the underwriters for the loan will usually research that to see if it's, that threshold's been exceeded. And then one clarification to Commissioner Woodhouse's question. There are 20 feet between some of the units. And then, Larvin, we just pulled up on the plans on the interior block. It's 15 feet between the units. But on the edges, it's, it is 20 between the buildings.
So that 15 feet is maintained by? By the HOA?
The whole site will be maintained by the HOA?
Sorry?
The whole site will be maintained by the HOA? All the, all the amenities?
All, okay.
Do we have, like we do with the site, could we put up the elevation for what was previously presented? And what we just went through with the applicant?
And I'll just, I'll point out, 150, 153 of the units are the rear load, rear load. And then 21 of them are front load. So it is, like, the overwhelming majority are the rear, rear load, which is why I was trying to point that out. I think that elevation looks really good.
So is that the original one, or is that the?
So that's the originally approved one, yeah.
So we have a brick and hardy facade?
Yeah.
And.
Roofline's flat, right straight across, no, no variation.
Yeah, very uniform, just a mirror image of itself.
Yeah, we were, we were trying to do better, but that's a subjective, we all know, right? Almost there, you're almost there. There it is. So we also have white brick and variation, wood paneling.
So you have much less brick, you have just the, the wainscote along the interior units, right? Is that what I'm seeing? Then the rest is hardy with the color variation, the hardy.
White, white brick.
Oh, is it all that whole section?
That whole thing's white brick.
Okay.
Oh, all the way up?
Yeah, that, that's all white brick. It's easier on a computer, the, the pulldown makes it harder to.
To me, the, that elevation, I mean, with the, the breaking up the roofline, those, those front canopies over the entrances, I, I like that look, that looks nice. While we're here, the side, can we see both the exterior sides? I think that was part of Commissioner Warnock's concern. I think maybe she'd been looking at one, like, yeah.
You passed them.
Yeah, you went right, you blew right by it.
There.
So that's the less enhanced.
Yep.
So that would be the interior.
Yep, we see the other side.
Go one more. That should, and that's a more enhanced for street-facing.
Wow.
And then there'll be trees in front of it, too.
The more enhancement is two windows?
Window panes. Yeah, those are still front loads, but now the rear loads are showing the same thing. So that's the more enhanced for the rear load, which is the overwhelming majority is, is, that's it. So that's the less enhanced, that's the interior. And then go back, there you go. That'll be the street-facing. And then there'll be trees and landscape there.
Sure.
So it'll be the same colors throughout? I mean, with a couple of the white.
Well, yeah, and they have, they have color variations.
Variations, but it's the same.
Always the same, but yeah, it'll be a similar.
Similar.
Yeah.
Throughout.
That's right.
Joseph, could you, could you go over again? You, you mentioned, so previously, it was going to be 2,500 square foot for rent. What are the sizes? I think you mentioned three or four sizes. Could you just tell me what the new sizes are?
It's, I have the exact, if you want it exact, I'll give you the exact. I gave you, I gave you an approximation, but.
Okay, yeah.
The rear load has a 1,333-square-foot unit, three-bed, two-and-a-half bath. And then another, another unit is 1,465 square feet. And then the front load has two different models. One's 1,593 square feet, and the other's 1,656 square feet.
Again, there's only 20 or 21 of those.
Of the front loads, you got it.
Yeah, so the majority of them are between the 13 and the 14.
Yeah, 13, 50, 40.
And those are two-bedroom?
All three-bed, two-and-a-half bath.
Three-bed.
Three-bed, two-and-a-half bath. All of them are two-car garages. I know there was mention of a, like a narrow garage. They're all standard. This is a standard 16-foot garage, I mean.
Did that change from the previous size, the garage, garage is consistent?
Garages didn't change that I know of. The width, the width changed of the entire floor, of the entire building footprint. But a 16-foot-wide garage is standard. If you go to 18, it's just like special order, it's not.
A 16-foot-wide garage door is standard. You can't fit two cars in a 16-foot-wide garage.
Right, you have to, you have to have additional width.
Right, just to be clear about garage size, it's uncommon to see garages that are less than 20 feet wall-to-wall on the interior.
But the door is, the door is 16-foot.
The door is 16-foot.
And these garage dimensions are, interior wall, interior wall?
I think Mr. Snyder has that.
I can't read that.
20 feet to external.
So.
Let's see, they've got the, they've got.
So it's another foot and a half on each side, if it's 20 feet, which is Larvin's garage, and he went and measured it after the DRC meeting today. And he has his Yukon and his Explorer in there, so. I think we're, we're going to be okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you back, appreciate it.
Brian, before we open this up, public hearing, can I ask one more, just clarifying question?
Sure.
You spoke a little bit about the hopes that the applicant would put in the landscaping at certain timing before the homes are occupied. Isn't landscaping required before we issue any CVOs?
Yes and no, sorry.
Could you expound a little bit on that for me?
Yeah, so phasing for the townhome portion is proposed to be completed in one. What we generally see, though, is they start with a building somewhere and work their way through the project. So what we would like to see ideally is some of the amenities to be called out, you know, prior to maybe 50%, or some number that's reasonable for the residences that are there, or the residents that are there. But at the same time, it still is an active construction zone. And so with the final plat, we usually have them give some thought as to where they may begin with landscaping or amenities and the building, and then where ultimately they're going to end, just so that some of those things are made available to the earlier residents instead of at the very end of the project.
So on past projects, we have put a requirement in before, I believe we did this on the development up by the Mouth of the Canyon, I can't remember the name now.
Whispering Pines?
Whispering Pines. They had to have the amenities in place before they reached a certain occupancy. Or actually, that was the other, the access road, the second access road had to be in before they reached a certain.
Yeah, but we also did move, have them move the clubhouse up into an earlier phase.
Okay.
And propose it in a later phase. And through those discussions, we had to move it up to an earlier phase.
So what about the landscaping around? So these are divided up into sections of townhouses. With the landscaping, does the city require the landscaping around that to be completed before it's occupied? Or how does that work out? As, as a person's moving in, as they're building through it, they start at one section, start building through it in one phase, the way it's currently presented, would they have to, what would they have to have completed before a family could move into it?
Generally, it's the landscaping around it. And then the amenities would be identified in a specific timeframe, whether it's a percentage of units or it's a phase. Generally, it's the landscaping around it, um, and then the amenities would be identified in a specific timeframe, whether it's a percentage of units or it's a phase. Um, what's tricky for the city is state code has changed where we cannot require a cash deposit to, uh, cover when the landscaping isn't yet completed. Um, so that's something we still work through and inspect, um, but there's just not that cash deposit element, um, involved anymore.
Could you bring up the site, please, just one more time for me? I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. My worry is, I don't want, I don't want a skid steer or something going, working around a site that we have a family living in or, or, or visiting. So are you saying that everything would be completed around this bank of units before we had to issue a C of O for that? That's what I would understand it to be.
Uh, no, with the change in state code, they can pursue the C of O. And then it would just be a matter of, uh, completing it before the project is done. But what we like to see is the phasing plan so that ideally as the buildings are completed, the landscaping's completed as well. And then the amenities are completed at an appropriate time.
I think I would like to see that also.
Can we require that? Is that something we can require?
The key is the development agreement.
Yeah.
The state code, like Brandon has described, does no longer, in fact, it explicitly prohibits cities from withholding certificates of, certificates of occupancy because things like landscaping aren't complete.
So you, we can't require a bond? Or not on that?
We cannot any longer, so that, in fact, that has created some real challenges in terms of meeting the expectation of, of residents. And, you know, the buyers of units and projects like this. At the same time, when that law was changed, very explicit language, clear language was added in the state code that allowed for, um, cities to, use development agreements to explicitly define what's going to be required throughout the life of the project in terms of when landscaping would be done. Or how assurances would be provided to make sure that amenities are constructed or again, like landscaping is going to be done on a certain timeframe. So I would say if that's a concern for the planning commission, it'd be appropriate to maybe articulate that as part of the motion. Um, and we can go to work, uh, as staff on getting language to that effect, whatever it is that you want to see done, added to the development agreement.
I, I personally would like to see, I don't know if that requires it to be divided into phases, uh, smaller phases, but I would like to see that, um, done before people, before there's a C of O issued. And I'd like to have the amenities tied to a certain amount complete, whether that's thirty-three percent, fifty percent, whatever that is. Cause I know the tendency would be to do that very last, after you've capitalized your project and you have that left over to do, so.
If the commission wanted to take a stab at what that threshold should be, that'd be helpful for us to use. Thirty percent, fifty percent, you know, whatever, maybe a unit count, however you wanted to define that.
Any thoughts on that, commissioners?
I agree, I think you've got a, you've got to make sure that's in there somewhere.
I think that's definitely something we should look into requiring because, you know, not saying that would happen here, but an unscrupulous builder could come in and throw it all up and be gone and sell the project off and leave, leave stuff unfinished.
And I think it's a reasonable expectation for the residents.
Right, right.
Very reasonable, that's, that's.
I mean, it could be, depending on how sales go, it could be a while before everything's developed, you know, and it'd be good to have that in. Okay, um, we'll open it up to, and maybe there's any more comments? This is a public hearing, so we'd like to open it up to those who have attended the public, if anyone has anything to say concerning this topic, we'd love to have you come up to the podium and state your name and questions. Okay, seeing none, I will close.
I do have a question.
Please come up.
I just didn't want to be first.
You'll be first and last, apparently.
Uh, my name is Kristen Murray and I live in, and actually, if you could get a map, a picture of the south end of the neighborhood that shows kind of the empty. We're Sky Meadows, so we're the neighborhood south of this development that kind of bodies up to it. But so my question was for the builders and in terms of your masonry fence and coming around. So I've seen some of the plans, I think I've seen the older set of plans. But so coming down Arrowhead and then that little cul-de-sac, the like south end of your plan, um, and there's supposed to be masonry fence around there, but you've dug out so far low, so like now we're sitting up about six feet higher than where your ground is. And I've seen some neighborhoods around where there's a mix of condo or townhouses next to neighborhoods, so then there'll be a masonry fence. And then if there's a change in elevation, then there's a really ugly gap and then you see the vinyl fence that's brought up like four feet or six feet or however far. And it's pretty big eyesore, and so I was wondering if your masonry fence is a six foot. And also, some of the neighborhoods, so like that two seventy-five west, I'm the two twenty-two, the new one on the corner. But like two seventy-five and everything coming behind that, they've been dug down so far, so like their property is just going to start to wash out because they, there's nothing holding them up. It's just kind of dirt coming down. So are you just putting a standing masonry fence or do you plan on bringing that elevation up to kind of compensate for what has been dug down in that space? And then even all along Arrowhead, where the road is and then where your property comes down, it's, comes down pretty far. But so is your masonry fence coming up on street level or down on townhouse level for that whole strip? That's my.
Am I allowed to answer?
Yeah.
Are you done?
Yeah, yep.
I'm very fortunate that I have civil engineer right here that could look up the grading changes, because I'm not as.
Kristen?
She can hear me.
I was just, I was just letting Kristen know, I'm fortunate I have our civil engineer sitting right next to me, because I'm not as familiar with the grade changes as she is.
Let's go, scroll through these plans.
So the answer to the question is it will be at grade, I mean, we have to meet grade at the neighbor's property. And so the retaining wall will be at that grade.
So you'll have a retaining wall plus a six foot masonry fence? And then, um, so like it will come, I mean, so in the plans, it looks like it comes all the way down Arrowhead and then, you know, that little nook coming down. So if you can bring it up a little bit more ugly, yeah. And then will it come, so like my property line is that, we're like cornered into your.
So this is your property?
Yep.
And this is where you're concerned about?
Fence will come back through my backyard, but then does it come on? Because, and I, we're friends with the people who bought the lot in front of us as well, so like their backyard as well, like is that masonry fence and that will be retained and brought up as well?
Yeah, any, any portion that abuts the single family lots will be masonry at grade.
Okay, but then how about on the street side? So like for us and the lot right in front of us.
Yep, same on the street side.
Great, and then my other question.
I'm sorry, when you say at grade, are you talking at grade for their property or at grade for?
The neighbor's pro, at grade.
At grade.
See, and our property is kind of unique because our, that corner point comes way down. But all the rest of it and then everything else around comes, comes up quite a bit, so.
And potentially, if there's an issue like that, we could work it out.
Okay.
Together.
And then I had another question, and I don't know if you guys would be able to answer it, but our neighborhood, so this Sky Meadows neighborhood right here, would really like that to not be a through street. And we've had members of our neighborhood come in and talk to council, so right there blocking it off. Um, I know you have two exits already, um, and I know a few ideas were proposed, but like an emergency gate so that it doesn't allow through traffic. I mean, we're only like thirty homes in this little neighborhood with tons of kids and you're taking a hundred and seventy-five townhouses that will have two cars. And I'm assuming a lot will be coming off the freeway because now Main Street and that intersection gets so busy. Like when I come home from work, I come, the pace and exit and come down the south and up to us. But so that's something that I know people from our neighborhood have come and talked to city council members, I don't know who they've spoken with. But wondered when that would be considered, when we should, you know, if more thought needs to be put into that, when we would need to come in before it's a done deal, it's too late. But that's probably not for them.
I don't want to speak for engineering, but I think that's a done deal, um, in the sense that we want to encourage, roads to connect and have connectivity through the project, not just for the roads, but also for the sidewalks. Um, other areas where connectivity has been a concern, we've done modifications to the design to discourage through traffic, but we've still kept the connection open.
Well, so what, how, what would discourage through traffic but keep the connection open?
Uh, chicanes or narrowing or bulb outs.
Speed bumps?
Usually not speed bumps, that makes it difficult for snow piles and whatnot.
And then also with part parking on our street also, especially like that.
What she's saying though.
Like how would we, for parking for those townhouses on, in our neighborhood?
The tricky thing, I'm trying to look at Josh, um, it is a public street, so parking is available. It gets difficult to enforce, uh, by permit or by certain hours of the day.
Yeah, I, the difficulty is, is if we have a police officer go out there, he's not going to know if it's your car parked in front of your house or.
Well, so I've lived in neighborhoods before where you have to have permit parking for the neighborhood, so like us as the residents, we have permit parking. So then that's how you would know if someone doesn't have that, then they wouldn't be.
Yeah, I don't know if they've done permit parking anywhere else in the city, but.
I've seen that in Salt Lake City when I was there, but I, I, I'm not aware of that here. At least permits for particular zones, that's what you're referring to, so this zone would have a zone whatever, zone three permit and then.
Okay, and so would it not be an option that, and then would it not be an option at all to have like an emergency gate put, be put there and you still have your through sidewalks and it's still a through street? It's just not.
Could, could we zoom over to the, um, the lot, the development adjacent, just, just to the north of the storage units? Where that through street goes into, um, yeah, keep a little bit more to your. North.
There you go.
Yep, so that through street right there, at the top of your screen, you can see the, the island's been put in there on that through street. Nope, 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 fall out. Right here. That, that's one of the calming efforts that the city put into, because that neighborhood had a similar concern back when we approved that development. And that was kind of to Brandon's point, that was an element we put in to help discourage speeds of people coming through there.
It probably couldn't be put into ours though, right? Cause we already have the street in place in front of my house and so we can't widen it and I, so I don't know what would be an option for that area.
If you did that, it would narrow it up, so there'd be less availability to park along the side of the street right there too.
Well, anyway, so we're, we're hoping that there's something, something that could be done to either slow traffic and even we'd be interested in, speed bumps coming through Hillcrest, I mean, it's a pretty short street, but, depending on the light and whatnot, like I just know that's a lot of, anyone that lives in this corner of the unit's not going to drive all the way up and come in and backtrack. They're going to come through our street. So that is definitely a concern we'd hope you guys keep in mind. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyway, my name is Larry Mattinson. And I live on forty south and six hundred east. Here, I've lived there for about forty plus years.
Sir, I believe that's another item that we're going to discuss tonight.
What?
Brandon was saying, Larry, that, uh, if you're here for the sixth east, that's our next topic after this one?
Not yet.
You want me to leave?
No, I want you to stay, stay, but the, the topic you're addressing is the next application. You live next to the, the next development we're going to talk about.
Yeah, I know.
The time to speak about that one would be in, when our next, on our next topic, the next thing we have to discuss.
Oh, you don't want me to talk now?
I want you to talk later, I want you to talk in just a little while, but not right now.
Five to ten minutes, hopefully.
Hopefully, is that okay? We definitely want, we definitely want your comments, just not right now.
Not right now, so next week I come back?
No, 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 in about ten minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, applicant, Joseph, could we, could we, I have a question for you based on Brandon's comments, so the discussion we just had with Brandon. The, uh, the idea of us putting some language into our recommendation concerning phasing and the development or, uh, the timing of the development of the amenities. Uh, I feel like you have concerns that you'd like to address before we entertain a motion.
Be as reasonable as you can be, is, would be my ask.
Okay, very good. Commissioners? Oh, uh, I guess I'm closing public hearing, so I'll close the public hearing. Um, just a point of order, Brandon, would we have another point, another public hearing for six A? Or is that the public hearing for both five A and six A? Okay, thank you. So on the topic of the development agreement and I guess, however we split that up.
Two separate motions. This preliminary plot, if you go to the next slide, does have findings and conditions, but as previously mentioned, you can add, uh, conditions to, uh, both, specific to the phasing and landscaping, or you can add it to the agreement specifically. However, you see that.
What I was just, what I was going to say was our comments on the timing of, and that would be for six A, not for the five A topic.
It would be better at the development agreement. The idea is we want to put it into the development agreement, any of these kinds of proposed changes.
Okay.
Cause that's what's going to ultimately govern, right?
Okay. Very good. I would think, so I'm just going to throw it out there, that I think we should have, uh, there should be some phasing for, I, uh, I don't know how much you, we'd want to divide that up. I don't like the idea of any equipment running around places that have people occupying. I've been around a lot of developments recently that have been being built in Spanish Fork and Pace and Salem area. And you'll have families living into a home that has gray dolls and skidsters running around in the adjacent lot. And I feel like that's a, a, a not an ideal situation I'd like to avoid, uh, if at all possible. I don't want to burden the applicant with having to have, uh, a whole bunch done or an exorbitant amount done, but I feel like there should be some, amount or some line drawn that after you have, uh, four or five of these townhome sections completed, that it's completed, it's done before we, uh, have people occupying them. I don't, I don't know how we would word that, and then as far as the amenities, I would think that fifty percent, uh, would be a, a good benchmark for that. That's my opinion, I'd love to hear what your guys' thoughts are.
Fifty percent was the number that came, you might add. Because it's, I mean, we still have plenty of development left, right? But we still have a lot of people there at that point and the amenities are there, right?
They're going to put them in eventually, so that's my thing, somewhere around there, fifty percent.
What about the idea of the landscaping around the units themselves or them being, uh, the, the site being complete before, or, or a phase being required, a certain amount of phases?
How many total buildings are we talking about?
Not units, you're talking about buildings?
Buildings themselves.
That's a good question.
Sorry, Russ Nelson, uh, one comment on the landscaping, we might need to just add in some language for a timing of the year. If it's winter months, that makes it a little bit hard to throw in some landscaping.
We don't want to die off of its planned agenda.
Thirty-four. Structures.
Thirty-four.
As long as he's right.
So, so I guess I got a question, is fifty percent, like we've never done this, is fifty percent to get the amenities done, is that a fair ask for somebody doing this?
That would be, that would be.
I'm getting a thumbs up, so, okay.
Eighty-five units that people were in, but that could potentially be, I think that's quite a few.
Yeah.
I do agree, I think you got to get amenities done, I, fifty percent's good with me, if it's good with them, and then I, I think the landscaping around that has to be done for sure. I don't know how you word that though.
Amenities and, and as the units are completed, the landscaping should come in right behind as, you know, as they can with the, depending on the time of year and whatnot, but, you know, if they're going to finish a unit, it should be land. you know, if they're gonna finish a unit, it should be landscaped.
I agree. And I think they're okay with that. I, I just don't know how we word that.
What if it was every six, what if it was something like every six buildings?
It's Josh's full-time job.
There you go.
Dave, what would you feel? I, I see groups, as I kinda break that into groups, I see buildings of six in quite a few areas. Um, they could break it up into something like that. Uh, those would be completed before the next phase is started or something like that. Not started, not, that, I'd be, that'd be too much of a detriment to the construction team, but before CFOs or any other CFOs are issued. For the amenities. I'm talking about for the landscaping around the units. So ideally, if we had, we had this group done before any CFOs were issued for these next buildings, so they're encouraged to have this all cleared off. These people are living their lives without a skidster running around their house or a concrete crew doing anything. And before we issued more CFOs. And then fifty percent of the units completed, amenities have to be in and done before that fifty, I don't know what it'd be, the fifty-first percentage CFO was issued.
Let me see if I have it. So essentially you want the thirty-four or so buildings broken out into what would be about six phases? Give or take, six buildings apiece?
Yep.
With some thought given to how to divide those phases?
Hmm.
So that reasonably you could expect the landscaping to be done in each of those phases before the applicants allowed at some point to proceed with development and some other part of the project.
I don't, uh, that would, if we did it that way, development, that would slow up.
Development, and it might be certificate of occupancy, but there would be some.
That'd be better. That way you could have other units being framed or finished. But they just can't, they know, I can't get any more occupancy until I get that landscaping done, get that done.
Got it. But within the phase where the landscaping hadn't been done, we would issue certificates of occupancy? Yes or no?
I didn't understand that.
So.
Conditional upon, like if it completes in November, you're not gonna require, you know, if this unit gets done in November, you're not gonna wanna put the, you can't require them to, for the landscaping until the ne- next spring. Cause it's just, you know, it's just not gonna work.
I think Commissioner Woodhouse, we're on the same page, just to make sure. So to use what you described as an example, uh, this bank up here, which I kinda isolated by the public streets there, right? Seems to make sense that that would be a phase. So as, um, these buildings and the units are inspected and our building inspectors find that they're ready for certificates of occupancy, we would issue those. Certificates of occupancy, whether the landscaping in that phase is done or not. However.
To what I described, yes.
There would be some point at which we would stop issuing certificates of occupancy elsewhere in the project until the landscaping in that phase is done.
In your first section. So they'd be proceeding, they're not, we're not slowing down the construction timeline. They're still proceeding. It's just we're not allowing anybody else to take occupancy on whether that phase two would be or what subsequent phase until everything is completed on that, your, your example.
On the previous phase.
Unless it's November through March.
Correct.
Right.
He's the car man.
Yeah. Cause you're going to, I mean, say you start on this, you're gonna work through in an orderly fashion, building the project. So it's gonna be, you know, you're gonna follow one after the, you're not gonna start here and jump down on this end and start. So maybe to state one step further then, by way of how you'd like to see things drafted. Um, and let's just say this happens to be phase one. So to restate, and I don't wanna take all night with this, I apologize, but, uh, we would issue certificates of occupancy here as the units pass their inspections. And we would issue building permits, but let's just say that maybe, let's say this is phase, let's say this is phase two. Over here, we'd issue building permits for phase two. But then we might not issue certificates of occupancy for phase two until everything is done in phase one. So it'd be, there'd be some, by sequential kind of nature to how that would be spelled out.
With a reasonable exception for time of year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think that would, should impact their construction schedules, therefore their construction costs. It would just make sure they complete things before, in a reasonable timeframe for the, the, the residents are moving into that area.
And the, yeah.
And then also on top of that is tying in the area amenities, uh, have to be completed before we issue, you know, at, at the time they're fifty percent complete.
Seems very reasonable.
And I think the number, you said six, but I think if we had some flexibility between four and six.
Something.
Something like that, cause.
Six-ish phases and whatever, whatever stuff.
Yeah, whatever any phases they decide to.
Yeah, yeah, like this group might be logically together. I can see other places where they're four. I can see other places where there might be six, so.
And it's gonna depend on the, the builders, the owners, their financing and whatnot, how they can do it and sell them, so.
But we group it in a way that gives us that incentive, right, to.
Yeah, yeah.
You're standing there, cause you have a comment.
Yeah, um, this is, well, let him introduce himself from Meritage. He has some additional context for the building timing and it might be important.
Oh, yeah.
That consideration.
Yeah, thanks so much. Uh, Mike Banner, I'm the division lead here for Meritage Homes. Appreciate everyone's time. Yeah, our intention to, will be to get the landscaping and the amenities in as soon as possible for livability for the residents, sellability. So our plan is to do one building a month. And so we feel the market will absorb, you know, five to six sales a month, so we'll build one. The only thing we'd ask for consideration, so if you do phases, right, so you're gonna, we're gonna dig one building in January, the next one in February, the next one in March, the next one in April. If we phase like you're mentioning, that first building's gonna be sitting done for three to four months while the rest of those buildings complete. And we just ask for that consideration that, once that building one is done in that phase, that we can close it and get CFO.
I think we, we said you could.
Okay.
That, what Dave just outlined, that, that would happen.
Awesome.
We wouldn't slow down the building. We would just, in that phase two, we might slow down your, your CFO if you haven't complied with what you just said on that first phase.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Commissioners, if we have.
I think we got where we wanted. I just have no idea who's making this motion.
I think it's you.
Go for it.
So the first one would be five A. So if you can just make sure we follow the, the, the proposed recommendation and the findings, conditions associated with that one.
I'm taking a stab at that one. Okay.
I think you're very qualified.
I'll make the motion that we.
Your screen, right here, you can see a kind of proposed motion there. And then if you want to add amended, amend that motion to include amendments to these, um, addendum with respect to what you just discussed, right, in terms of.
The phasing, the.
It could be said just that way too.
So the proposed motion is at the bottom there plus the additional changes that you just discussed.
Um, so I'll make the motion that we approve, recommend for approval, um, the proposal that involves the, the master development agreements, Sky Meadows to accommodate the purpose of amenities, um, the preliminary, preliminary plot. You what?
Just the bottom section.
Oh, just the bottom?
Just the bottom.
Oh. Um, that we're just making the motion to approve the proposed River Meadows Townhome Amendment Development, pending findings and conditions, and the phasing timeline, I don't know how to say that.
You're saying, right?
Yeah.
As discussed.
As discussed.
Great. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Give you a second.
A motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, the, that motion passes. Uh, item six A, which is the River Meadows Townhome Amendment Primary Plat.
And we do.
We've already heard on that from staff.
Reopen the.
I know we've heard from the applicant. We, this is a public hearing, so we'll open this topic up to public hearing. Anybody here to speak on it? Okay, I'll close public hearing. Um, any Commissioner comments?
I, I think I just wanna make one, one comment here. Um, I'm not necessarily opposed to what's going on, or to what, what we're proposing here. But I just get concerned about parking. I think we're gonna have some, I think we're gonna have a lot of vehicles here. I see that, uh, you know, we are a community that, uh, commutes by way of cars, right? And, uh, I just wanna make some comment there and, and maybe just generally to note that, right? You know, the city council listens to this later and, and have some thoughts there, but I'll, I'll just leave my comment at that.
And I'll agree, just to comment, um, I do like the idea that it's going from rental properties to, um, owners, ownership. I do like that. And I just encourage, you know, that we, uh, maintain good relationships with the existing neighbors and the neighborhood that's there. You know, cause I do know their concerns and they're gonna have concerns, traffic is gonna be affected in those, you know, cause you move out there, you buy this, this nice home, quiet neighborhood and everything, and then here comes a big development next door. It's gonna add a lot of traffic and that, so, you know, that's my biggest concern, that we can work with the neighbors there and make sure, you know, we get the retaining walls in and everything to take care of those neighbors.
I, uh, to go with those comments, um, to me, the, the biggest thing is I would probably be against this if it was still rental properties, adding in twenty-four more units into a rental agreement. I like that it's a for-sell product. That's very important to me. The existing, this is all approved as one development. Everybody that's been building out there except for the people who've lived there a long time on Delmonte, would have seen that this was going to be a hundred and fifty rental units instead of now it's a hundred and seventy-five for-sell units. I think that'll be a, uh, more of an ownership, uh, type of persons will be living in there. So I, I see this as an overall betterment for the city. Um, so I, I like that aspect of it. Um, coming back and asking for more units after we've approved it, sits wrong with me, but I can see that the applicant is making a concession or it may just works out better for their business model. I don't know. That is what I consider improvement for us. So that, that's what is motivating my decision on that.
I would echo the same thing. The for-sell makes a big difference to me. I, that's the difference maker, so.
Yeah, I, I wanna make one comment there. We have a housing shortage and for-sell and getting, uh, opportunities for individual stone homes. That's critically important to me, especially in this community. So, I like that.
Do I have a motion?
I would make a motion that we accept six A as proposed.
Uh, there's a motion to read or to, to state it in that way.
Recommend the approval of the proposed River, River Meadows Townhomes amended preliminary plat based on these findings and conditions.
Okay.
That stood below.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion will go before the council. The next topic, thank you to, uh, people who commented and the applicant and staff who explained that, going through everything with us. Um, six A is the sixth east townhomes. I don't know if, could I ask somebody from staff to go see if Larry Mattinson is still here? Uh, I feel bad that he left before stating his opinions. I don't know if he's.
Do we know what he was, his concern for?
I can imagine what his concerns are, but I'd love to hear from him.
He's directly south, south of the.
He's directly south. He's a lot adjacent to this next item.
If we can't locate him, we could possibly use utility records.
Well, we'll make sure that he knows when the council hearing is.
Okay, thank you. Being a lifetime resident of the community and living next to this, adjacent to this, his opinion should be
Yeah.
are important to me, at least.
Absolutely.
I think he must have left. Brandon, if you'd like to go ahead, Ian's looking for him.
Thank you. Um, so this is similar to the last proposal in the sense that we have, uh, two separate motions. Uh, one is related to, uh, reapproving a zone change, um, on the property to accommodate the infill overlay zone for a townhome project with four units. And then the second would be updating the preliminary plat. As indicated in the staff report, um, this was previously looked at by the council in September of twenty twenty-one. And the applicant would like to make some modifications as far as the design and layout. Um, using the same zoning mechanism, but just an, an updated, uh, building elevation and layout. Um, this is the subject property. It's along Center Street, um, at the corner of Sixth East. Let's go to the next slide, please. This is a image of the property. Previously there was a home on the property. I believe the applicant got a demolition permit slightly after he had the original approvals. Um, let's go to the next slide, please. Uh, this is showing the property. I could be wrong, but I think you were saying that, uh, Larry lives here.
Yes.
Okay. We'll definitely reach out to him. Uh, this is the general plan. This is important because it shows, um, the intentions of the council as far as the future of, uh, land uses along Center Street. The yellow is lower density residential and then the blue is mixed use, which allows for a number of different types of uses, but also, a higher density use, uh, residential use than the low density that you see to the north and further to the south. Let's go to the next slide. This is the subject property. The zoning that you see in place is from that twenty twenty-one approval, um, by the council. Uh, let's go to the next slide. This is the current proposal. Um, there is a slight change. If we go to the next slide real fast. It's hard to see, um, but with the DRC discussion, there was a desire to have the north unit have a front door, um, facing Center Street to give a, a presence to Center Street. And so, um, the, with that change, the unit, uh, also changed in depth slightly. Let's go to the next slide. This is the general layout. You would have the masonry wall that's on the west and south property lines completed. Um, you'd have a common, uh, shared driveway off of Center Street at the rear, the west side of the units, which would face to the east, um, minus that north end unit, which has, uh, we have an elevation that we'll show you in just a second. There is proposed to be two onsite parking stalls here reserved for guests and that is called out in, uh, the CCNRs and would be enforced, um, and signed as such. And then there would be, uh, public street parking for the majority of the year on Sixth East. Um, let's go to the next slide, please. This is the landscaping plan. Um, the applicant's looking to utilize the infill overlay zone to, um, obtain permission for the townhome product. And so with that, we do require improvements to the site, such as a landscaping plan. With that, we do require a buffer. Um, so here you've got ten-foot buffer with trees, um, shrubs. In addition to the masonry wall, there would be a dumpster enclosure here in the corner. Buffer would then continue and then you'd see the improved park strips in front of the buildings. Let's go to the next slide. Um, this is just displaying the type of wall improvements with a cap, um, as well as for the dumpster enclosure. Um, a few areas that will have, uh, retaining walls, um, to deal with the change in the grades from the neighboring properties to the site. Let's go to the next slide. All right, these are the elevations that were originally provided, um, previous to the DRC meeting. What you see is this end unit. Um, we've got an updated slide that will show this door being moved and some changes to the building so that the, there is a presence on Center Street that was listed in your staff report as a condition. So let's go to the next slide. Once again, this is previous to the DRC meeting. Um, this is the interior side. That would be ten feet from the buffer and, or excuse me, from the masonry wall and the, and have the landscape buffer rear onto the parking alley. Um, this is the previous Center Street elevation. Let's go to the next slide. You can see how it changed. We've got still the wraparound porch, but we now have the, uh, entry porch as well as the, um, roof and, uh, front door on that elevation. Um, so it moved off of this spot, uh, over to here. Let's go to the next slide. So this is what was previously approved in twenty twenty-one. We're just. We're just providing this as reference. I know a few of you had questions as far as refreshing your memory. So this is Sixth East here. This is Center Street here. The applicant at that time, I believe, came in with three or four different types of building elevations that he shared with you as examples, and I think this was the one that moved forward. Let's go to the next slide. This was the previous plan. Next slide, please. And so with this one, we do need to open for public hearings on both the plat and the zone change. This one's unique in the sense where it's an infill, the preliminary plat will not go to the council, so you will act as the approving body as you see fit after holding a public hearing. But then the zone change that's tied to it will continue on to the city council. And so what staff has written, if you look at the condition, this is for the plat, so number four is that the city council approves of the associated zone change. Number five is what the DRC previously discussed, and the applicant was kind enough to deliver some updated elevations today to us. And then six is related to finishing the wall. If we go to the next slide, and then this one is the zone change, which does indicate the recommend approval. Any questions of staff? Otherwise, we do have the applicant and his engineer present.
So it was approved previously for the four units?
Yes.
And it's still four units?
They're still proposing four units. Two garage, just a different product and different layout.
The four previous units had garages as well.
Correct.
No, 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 I get it. I'm just...
The main difference is it's come on Center Street now, right?
I'll let the applicant speak to the reason for the change in the product. We'll invite John Smiley up. Is there any other questions for?
There's four, now there's two.
Correct.
I thought we had more than that last time, okay. And the, the, they're all fronting essentially Sixth, on that angle.
Yeah.
Unless green space, it becomes driveway in the back.
All fronting Sixth, but I thought one had a front on.
Now, the DRC made it front center.
Yeah. And the, this will remain, this sidewalk will move up here, so you'll come out the unit here, but then all four sidewalks will uniformly be on Sixth East.
Go out to Sixth.
To encourage the parking over here instead of at the corner. There's no other questions. We'll invite the applicant up before public hearing, public hearings, excuse me. Two?
Two.
Our attorney.
We only have one on the agenda, but, okay. The applicant might come up and address this or not? You don't have to unless you want to sell your product.
No, I just can give you the explanation that the first product, they were big townhomes and, and with the market correction that's come by, you know, there's not much of a, of a need for a $550,000 townhome. And so, as the market, as the market dictated, we, we went back to kind of, back to the, to a, to a very standard style of, of townhome rather, rather than the curved ones. So that's all we did. So it's still four, still the same garages and, and everything like that.
What is the size of the, the new proposal? What is the size of per unit?
1460, I think.
1460. Three-bed, two-bath, or?
Three-bed, two-and-a-half bath with a basement underneath.
Unfinished basement?
Unfinished basement.
Okay.
We're encouraging our, well, no, it's, it's in our CCNRs that, 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 that both vehicles be parked in the garage. Some of my earlier, everything's a learning curve. So some of the other projects that we have, people fill the garage full of storage and then don't park in their garages. So we are, we're building unfinished basements here and as we, and encouraging them to use the unfinished basement as their storage unit and park the two cars in the garage.
I think every townhome developer has that learning curve. All the garages seem to be using storage.
Yep.
Homeowners too, most of them.
Okay.
Very standard.
I don't know if I have any questions?
I think my biggest concern was the parking, but if they have to be in there, that's going to work, because if not, you're going to, it's going to get ugly in the winter with people.
But how will that be policed? How is that going to be monitored? Are you going to, how is the site managed?
At this point, I'm going to rent, I'm going to have them as rentals, so I get to police it that way. I don't know. I, I would, I would have to, I would have to get some expertise on how to do it when I'm not, when I'm no longer in the picture. I, I don't know how to do that after that, unless it, unless it gets all sold to one person again.
How much space have we got right here in your driveway?
There's 26 feet from the back of the building to the curb.
Okay. So I imagine if somebody parks their vehicle in front of their garage, the neighbor's not going to be able to, the neighbors are going to complain.
Yes.
Because they're not going to be able to get through comfortably.
Right.
So.
Impractical.
Yeah.
For all purposes.
Because it's going to be, that's going to be a tight turn anyways to get, pull into that driveway.
Right.
And the garage.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the city, yeah. That, that, talking with, with Dave and Brandon earlier, that's, the 26 feet is what i- is the standard.
It's, yeah, okay.
I think you mentioned there was a dumpster down here, or, so there will be no garbage service here per the city?
No.
So will they, okay. Will there, will it be a, the dumpster?
Enclosed dumpster.
So a truck will have to pull into the back to dump it?
But...
To pick it up?
Well, yeah, yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll pull straight down that, dump it, and back, back out.
Okay. So it's not individual?
No, it's not.
Garbage cans per home that they take out to the street?
Right.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, that, just that, and that'll pretty much police parking.
Right.
Out in the driveway anyways.
Yes, it will.
So I think, Brandon, we had some comments from Commissioner Warnock on this also? Or did she just, was her comments on, I know she said something about she was concerned with street parking but knows the city allows it? I just wanted to make sure of her, she took the time to send in her thoughts. I want to make sure they're addressed.
Yes, on this item, her comment was just concerned about onsite parking, making sure they had adequate parking, they're good-sized townhomes, and could easily have three cars, four cars per unit. On-street parking is fine with me if it weren't for the snow ordinance. And my response was that they do meet the parking, and yes, she's correct, that most of the year the street parking is available, other than on the days that the snowplows come through.
Yeah, okay.
One, I, one note on parking. In the future, we'll be putting a signal there at Center and, and Sixth. When that signal goes in and things are redone, street parking won't be allowed on Sixth East.
Like the entire way here, or, okay?
Yeah, just with how they're configuring it.
With that in mind, Brandon, what's your, you're still thinking this is adequate parking?
I, that's news to me, so I'm just taking it in for a second. I would love to see the design as to why parking would go away. I don't remember the dimensions of the property. I'd say it's 125 feet deep.
Yeah, 90 by 125.
So I'd assume that maybe we'd fit two in furthest from the intersection? I guess I'd have to see the design of the intersection.
Yeah, I don't, that was just from our traffic engineer. I don't have the design available, but when he looked at the plans, that was one of his comments.
I guess my response would be I'd encourage him to design it in a way that some parking is still available. That would be my response.
Because that on-street parking, I'm, my assumption, as I look at this, is the parking is fine, assuming there is on-street parking. If we don't have that, I feel like we do not have enough parking.
The parking's met as designed. The on-street parking would be convenient and in addition to the two-car garage.
So we do meet it. Can I, the two-car garage is counting? The two that we have there, we meet our requirements.
Yeah.
Two and a half, pretty good.
I, I mean, for all intents and purposes, those N3 units are going to be parking on Sixth East. It's that's where the front door is. I'm sure they'll drive around back maybe, but somebody's going to be parking on that street.
Correct.
Which actually helps, moving that entrance to Center Street side moves those further back from the intersection, which is good. Any other comments, commissioners? Thank you for addressing us.
You bet.
This is a public hearing. Would like to open up a public hearing, except for some people. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for the, for the primary plat portion of it. Commissioners, any final comments? I like the idea, I don't see, I see this as a more sellable product for the applicant than the angles that we had before. Visually, I like the look of the previous proposal. It's, it's an attractive, it was an attractive building then. I think this is, the applicant has a good point. That'd be a very big building that's, the, the cost would be maybe defeat our purpose of what we want to do. I'm assuming these would be able to be built cheaper and better and hopefully to lower that entry cost. I like the idea of the unfinished basements. I, hopefully that would help with storage. I have a feeling that they're probably going to be, those garages are still going to be used, but hopefully I can fit one car in there. And, you know, other than that, I don't see any major changes that make me withdraw my support that I had for it before.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, it's a sellable project. I think we're looking right now, this being a rental that's sort of managed, which I don't necessarily have concerns about, but it's a, it's, it's a design that, that I think makes sense. Obviously, parking is what it is. People are going to do what they're going to do, and we're not in a space where parking is a complete unavailable, given some changes there. But I would like to, you know, obviously, we'll see what happens when we get the, the intersection in place there as well. So I don't know that I have overwhelming concerns.
That's actually a concern of mine, because I don't want to have the intersection go in, then all of a sudden, okay, what do we do? I don't want to have this parking pushed in front of the rest of the residents along that street. So I, I, I don't know what we, what we need to do there. That is a concern. I, I did not know that was coming up or that was going to be impacting on this project.
And I don't know that there's a whole lot we can do where they're, they're meeting the code with the parking and...
Other than that's a problem we'll run into when, when, you know...
We seem to run into it on every project we run across.
Yeah.
There's never enough, but, you know, there's not much we can do about it.
Brandon, you said there'd be a masonry wall required on both sides? And it's, it's, it'll be just a standard masonry wall? You know, this is only a four-unit, it'd still be the same thing? Okay.
It's already there, right? They're just putting a cap on it now.
Okay. Any other comments? If there's none, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll, I propose, I move to recommend approval of the proposed Sixth East Town Home Zone Change based on the findings and subject to the conditions discussed.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
A motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, wow.
Now it's up to you.
Glad that John and Stacy could come by for 10 seconds. The, that would be, what is the number of the second? So now it's the zone change?
Second is the zone change.
Okay. That was a public hearing also, so I need to open that up for public hearing. Anybody here to talk on that topic? If not, I'll close that public hearing. Commissioners, any comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll propose a motion that we accept to recommend the approval of the East Sixth East Town Homes change based on the following findings, following conditions.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Those will both go before the city council at their next meeting.
Correct.
Okay. Dave, I, with the, the resident that came up to speak on this matter didn't wasn't allowed. What is, what is our proper way to handle that?
Yeah, I was just thinking.
He made the effort to be here. What is the, what is our, not recourse, but how, how do we make sure that?
Address his concerns?
Yeah, address his concerns.
We need to hear from him, right? First, so I think, you know, like I mentioned...
He made an effort to get here.
Pardon me?
He made an effort to get here.
Clearly, yeah, and I think he, in all likelihood, heard about tonight's meeting because we sent letters to folks in the neighborhood. I'm thinking that we make sure we send a letter to 40 South 600 East, just focusing on the council hearing at a minimum. We can try to give him a call as well, but I think inviting him to that opportunity is probably the best thing we can do at this point, but I'm, I'm open to whatever. We've already satisfied the minimum noticing requirement, but I agree with you. We want to make sure that he has a chance to speak his mind and share his thoughts.
Yes. Yeah, that is quite important to me, when, especially, you know, we have a lot of people come before this commission that have lived here a year and want to express their concerns. Larry's been there my entire life and his entire life, I believe.
Well, we haven't had an overwhelming number of people that, like you said, have made the effort to come, so when somebody does...
Yes.
We want them to at least be heard.
I think it'd be worthwhile to do beyond the minimum if we can call as well.
Yeah, for sure. I think we're definitely committed to that.
Okay. So that was seven A. So the next item would be the Shlon Reception Center Zone Change. Stop that.
Sorry, I'm sorry. It's deserved. Okay. This is the Shlon Reception Center Zone Change. It's located at 710 East Center Street. It's a little over an acre. There's actually three parcels on this property, but we'll get to that in a second. The property, if you go to the next slide, is currently zoned R16. That's our smallest single-family residential zone with the general plan designation of mixed use and some low density. So the applicant has applied for a zone map amendment in order to change the zoning of the property to CO, commercial office, with the development enhancement overlay. So the reason for this request is because the property has been operating a reception center in a legal, non-conforming fashion for many decades now. There was a variance supposedly, supposedly issued at some point back in the day, many decades ago, and some staff member, myself, went looking everywhere for this variance and didn't find it, but we do believe that there was a variance that was issued at some point, saying that you can off-burinate this site as a reception center, even though it's in a residential district. Anyways, though, the property owner would now like to add additional uses to the site, which would mean that the variance wouldn't hold up. They'd have to change the zoning to something that would actually allow for those uses, which is why we're here today. And so we can't issue any licenses until the zoning's been changed, any further business licenses until the zoning's been changed to something that would support additional uses. Some of those potential uses, and I think this is kind of up in the air, maybe the applicant could elaborate in a minute, but something that, some that we've heard have been potentially a gym for senior citizens, arts and crafts classes and lessons, cosmetology studios, some small office spaces for like accountants, as well as a variety of small retail businesses. I think one of those was selling emergency equipment to first responders, something like that? Yeah, so kind of a variety of potential uses here. Staff threw around the idea of rezoning this to C1 neighborhood commercial, just because it's in a residential zone, but felt that maybe commercial office actually fit more of the potential uses than neighborhood commercial. Also, neighborhood commercial does not allow for the development enhancement overlay. does not allow for the development enhancement overlay right now, so that was also an issue. So the reason also, now that they need a development enhancement overlay as well, is because there's, they're lacking a bit of a, um, landscape buffer at the moment, the 10-foot buffer that we would require and masonry wall along this eastern side of the property between it and the residential use on the other side. As well as, there's not curbing throughout the parking lot, which is something we would require. And there could potentially be a shortage of parking. Technically, we can't say for sure because we don't know what the uses are. But that could be an issue at some point. So that's why the development enhancement overlay would be required for this site as well. So that's kind of the zone change side of this. There's also some text amendments that are on the, or a text amendment that's on the agenda and that's associated to this, so I feel like I should probably explain that as well. One part of that text amendment is adding event centers to the commercial office zone. We would classify the reception center as an event center. And that needs to be added to the commercial office zone in order for that use to continue. Once it's rezoned. I think I have that, if you skip forward. He's busy right now. But that would have to be added to the commercial office zone. And then the second part of that text amendment is changing the landscaping requirements for that eastern property line. It would change the requirement for, um, commercial spaces and professional offices that are currently operating to not have to construct a masonry wall when adding other allowed uses in the base zone. If there are no changes proposed to the structures or to the parking areas on the site. So this would be the example. They're not planning on changing the parking. They're not planning on changing the building. So we would normally require a wall here for commercial uses, but the text amendment would mean you would not need the wall there. So that's another part to this. Let's see. Another important note is that as a part of just some of the conditions with this, some of these, some of the vegetation along this buffer is also potentially unhealthy. Which I think the applicant is aware of and is planning to replace some of those trees. But that is a condition that we've added to the staff report. That was kind of a lot. So, open to any and all questions about this.
So your, your text amendment, could you?
You can go forward a couple of slides.
Reiterate that a little bit more, because you're talking about making a text amendment for all existing businesses.
Correct.
That would now be changing their purpose.
Yeah.
This specific one doesn't raise a lot of red flags. I dislike very much when we make text amendments based on specific instances that apply to the city in general. So, um, could you maybe just walk me through your proposed text amendment?
Yeah, so this is the first part to the text amendment, just adding event centers to the commercial office zone. So the commercial office zone is what we're proposing to change the zoning of this property to.
Right.
It currently operates as a reception center primarily. We would define a reception center as an event center. That's kind of our definition for it. So in order for the applicant to continue doing the reception center, we would have to add the event center use to the zone. So that's the first part. The second part is the part that is maybe a little, definitely a little more complicated. Just skip, Josh, if you skip forward a couple of slides for me. Oh, just this one, sorry, actually, just one slide. So this is in our landscaping requirements. And so what's outlined in red is what would be changing. So in situations where a non-conforming site is occupied by professional office or commercial use, it's changing, would change for both of those. And no changes are proposed to the structure or parking area. It could be approved for new uses without requiring the construction of a masonry wall.
It's the idea of changing, so if the Shalon Center changes from a event center to a something that has more traffic, maybe more noise. We're still not changing the structure, we're not changing the parking. But we've changed the use of the building to where it could be more of a nuisance to the neighborhood.
Yeah, then that's something to consider for sure, yeah.
Because this would allow, as long as the building didn't change, any use.
Yeah. Well, any use that is allowed.
Within that list that we just.
In the zone, in the base zone, yes.
So I'm not so concerned with the first, adding that there.
Okay.
I I, I don't like o- overregulation or anything like that, but at the same time there could be, there could be a potential for future change there, right? So.
Yeah, no, they're definitely, there could be. And there will be a number of other uses, kind of like I mentioned, with this zone change anyways, so.
The one key with the text amendment though is that the site may be approved for new uses allowed without requiring a structure. So it's not a requirement, you don't have to approve it, it doesn't force us to approve it without that, but we can, right? So if they want new uses, they haven't changed anything else, they're just adding uses. We don't have to require a masonry wall, but we could if we wanted to. So depending on what the use change is, you can, or you may choose not to. I think that's an important distinction.
So it's leaving it as an option?
Correct.
Okay, that's not how I was reading that.
It's that may word.
Without requiring.
It's good clarification.
May without requiring.
Mr. Nielsen, as I understand it, it likely would be the Development Review Committee that would be applying that may. So I don't know if that changes your perspective. But we'd be looking at that, I assume, in the context of a site plan that would accompany a proposed new use of the property.
But we'd still have the option to require it.
It would be the Development Review Committee, but the city, yeah.
Their conscience to that.
So if they come back with and do any
That could be a condition.
upgrades to the building, we could require.
Things that would trigger
That would trigger.
A site plan application requirement.
That would require by what is said there from how I was interpreting it the first time. Well, they're saying, even if it's, uh, anything that goes before them would change their licensing or their permitting. Even if it's just the type of use, it could still then trigger a, a better division on the property.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's, that's what I understand, so.
I appreciate that clarification and I think it
Thank you.
Addresses my concerns.
Any other questions for staff? Does the applicant want to address the commission? Well, you're here. You've sat through a long meeting, you might as well say something.
Your money's worth.
Cameron Spotten. Ian's been doing a great job helping me on this. This is outside of my wheelhouse, but he's, he's answered questions. Dave's answered questions and met with me. Somewhere, once upon a time, my dad came in and bought this building and got a variance. We were told we needed to, he was told he needed to encase the property with a privacy fence, so he put up chain link fence. I remember putting the slats in it. So every, everything is fenced off. There's no access in between anybody else. And I think that's where we talked about the masonry wall maybe not being required because once upon a time, the city told us to put that in. And so there is privacy fence all the way around. The Canadian choke cherries along this side here, there's about three or four of them that are dead. We're planning on taking those out. Uh, I've talked to Angel Lopez, the arborist, who's given me two or three tree suggestions that should fit within there, having dealt with the city and things before. When we put the Canadian choke cherries in, I didn't, I didn't, I only believed half of what the landscaper said. He said they wouldn't grow and interfere with the power lines, and they didn't, just like he said. And he also said they would die in 30 years, which I didn't believe because the tree's a tree and should grow forever, but they are dying out. And we are planning on replacing them. As far as potential new uses, I've got two daughters that are master estheticians. They're thinking salons. My son's a firefighter. He's thinking maybe uh, something for first responders to buy boots, shoes, belts, buckles. We're just trying to decide what the next generation is. In the Shalon, over the years, we've had private schools, daycares, preschools, karate studios, aerobic studios. All sorts of things that may have gone under the radar but had business licenses. We're, we're just coming here today to try to tidy everything up. Dad got the variance because they didn't want it turned into a bear haul. We haven't done that. We want to maintain the old building and, and move forward, so. I personally, fighting with my own children, would rather put in a chiropractor or a physical therapist, somebody that needs a second office. Comes from Provo two days a week, doesn't conflict with invent parking. You know, we want to keep it quiet. We've got great neighbors, we've got a great relationship with them, so. The trees, we know about. Ian's gonna coach me or tell me where to go next. I, I think Dave wanted us to combine the three parcels. We're, we're agreeable to that. Was there a third stipulation? Yeah, we're just, we're just riding this train. We're not sure what we're doing. Probably should have been done 20 years ago.
Well, it's good that you're doing it now and, and through the years, it's been a great addition in the city. It's a landmark going up Center Street, so we're glad to see you're still maintaining it and operating it and hopefully.
We're just trying to figure out what the next evolution would be. And, and really the space that we're looking at is the ground level on the north-south side. There's about, well, there's an old scout room in there and about three or four old class, six classrooms. Might could have an accounting office in one. We could do a small retail space. I think we're fine with the Utah Valley Children's Choir still being in there because the one slide we looked at says instructional uses. The Children's Choir's been in there licensed and operating for over 20 years now too, so. We don't want to lose the event center and we don't want to push the choir out. But I think instructional, whatever there was one heading that we felt like would, would protect the choir.
Great.
So does anybody have any questions for me?
No questions but comment. Yep, grateful for, you know, the brainstorming that you're doing there and, and it's a a, yeah, beautiful building that we can continue to see used there, and I think it's a location that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. And, and the trees, I can tell you that we're talking about would not interfere with the power lines and hopefully this time live longer than me and not die out like the Canadian choke cherry, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I'm assuming that what we said about the Children's Choir is correct. The staff would agree with the applicant's comments on that use?
I think if you go back a couple of slides, you can see the one where it was in red for the event center.
That might be a, a Dave Anderson question. He's the ultimate say on all things use.
I think instructional singles is kind of what we had talked about before.
That's likely what we would call it. We have a little bit of latitude for similar things that we don't exactly have a category for, but I think that's.
Okay, so I want to make sure that has no concerns with, since I have a long-term tenant there that I think half my family's attended, so I want to make sure that's, that the assumption is correct.
I, I agree, that's correct.
Commissioners?
No questions, no comments?
No concerns.
This is a public hearing, so we'd like to open it up to the public, if anybody's here to speak on this. Scott? Nothing? Okay. We'll close public hearing. Commissioners, any closing comments? If not, I'd love to hear a motion.
I think it looks good.
I'll make a motion. I move to recommend approval of the proposed Chilin, Reception Center Zone Change based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions as discussed.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. So I guess that that is a, recommend approval. Okay, so that will then go to the council.
Correct.
Right, yep. Okay. We move on to our next item, which is, we have a series of Title fifteen amendments, which are also public hearings. We'll go through each one, have a public hearing for each one as we go through it. Who is going to address this regarding? I guess this would be eight B, because we've already went over.
It went over eight A, but you need to have a public hearing and.
True, okay. We didn't pass a motion on that.
Correct.
Okay. If you, if you have anything to add on that, you can add, or we can just go through your past comments and go from there.
Any clarifications, anything?
No.
Nope.
Excellent.
Public hearing, anybody here to speak about the amendment that we just reviewed for the commercial office use? And the, the language we, this language that we had up here before. Seeing none, I'll close the meeting. And then we have any motions on that?
What?
What's being asked? Are you looking for a motion?
What do we need to make a motion on?
The acceptance of the amended text.
I'll make a motion that we accept
Recommend.
The amendment, the recommended amendments for eight A. Right, might have made A?
Probably need to list out what it's for.
Yeah, I would say.
Regarding the commercials event centers.
Yeah, you're recommending. If you're, if it's.
How do we want to recommend this?
You tell us. So it sounds like you want to recommend that it be approved.
Yes.
So it'd just be, I move to recommend that the proposed Title fifteen amendment relative to event centers be approved, if you want it, if that's what you want to do.
Yeah, I would recommend that we approve, make a motion to approve this Title fifteen amendment for the event centers as addressed.
Perfect. Have a motion?
Perfect, yep.
Yep, I have a second?
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Eight B Title fifteen amendment for I one cannabis processing facility.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. In terms of the proposal, it's about as straightforward, I think, as anything could be. And if we can go back, there we go. So what we have here, I think back two more to start with, or maybe, no, I'm turned around now. Back one now. Perfect, thanks. So, this is an excerpt directly from Title fifteen of the list of uses that are in one form or another allowed in our industrial one zone. And just to provide a little context, and I think this is important. A very, very large part of the community is zoned industrial one, so essentially everything, if you can look at it this way, north of I fifteen, you know, where I fifteen's kind of on the diagonal. Certainly, the properties around the airport. Almost everything in that part of the city is zoned industrial one, so indeed, we're talking about a large area. We're also talking about a zoning district that is probably, it, it is, I would say, our most permissive zoning district that's used on any kind of scale throughout the city. We have, we have some other zones that are more permissive, but they're only located in some very, very isolated parts of the community. So the, excuse me, the list of allowed uses carries over onto the next page, and this is where maybe it matters. The proposal tonight involves a, a use that we don't define in our municipal code. A cannabis processing facility. It is defined in Utah code, so we simply rely on the definition that's provided in state law for this use. In Title five, so what we're looking at here is text from Title fifteen, one part of the municipal code. And Title five, another part of the municipal code, five forty-eight thirty. We list some criteria that the city has adopted relative to cannabis processing facilities and two other cannabis-related uses that are distinct. And how they're defined in state law from a cannabis processing facility. The applicant who's proposing that cannabis processing facilities be made a use subject to conditions in our industrial one zone is with us tonight. We had a chance to talk a little bit in your work session before the meeting about, um, what I understand a cannabis processing facility is and is not. I certainly would defer to Mr. Williams, who I truly consider to be an expert on the subject, maybe to provide you more. subject, maybe to provide you more clear information as to what exactly we're talking about here. Um, but maybe before I answer any questions you have and step down, um, I will mention that from what I've been able to learn about this use and my perception on it seems to sync with the rest of the Development Review Committee that's recommended that this change be approved, is that frankly, it's about as benign as anything could be. And I'll let Mr. Williams maybe describe, you know, some of the things that, um, would make that the case. Um, but it's really pretty straightforward in terms of what's proposed.
And we're adopting sections of the state code, the state guidelines on what a cannabis processing facility is?
I'd maybe just say it a little bit differently, but yeah, um, I think we're relying on the state's definition of the use instead of creating our own, um, which there's some benefit to simply referring to the state code instead of, for example, adopting a definition into our code. One of the challenges that sometimes results from having, even if it starts as the same different definition in different places, the state might change their definition. We might lapse and not stay current. And occasionally that causes problems. So it's not uncommon for us to rely on, you know, maybe something, again, that is defined in the state code. And that's the case here.
Okay. And you said that we, um, previous to this, that we, this has not been allowed in an I-1 zone. It is currently allowed in the I-3?
Correct, only in the I-3 today.
Only in the I-3, okay. Guess we'll hear from the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Is the applicant here? Would they like to address us? If so, please come up to the microphone, state your name, what you heard us talk about, and then tell us a little bit about your, what we're doing.
A little nerve wracking, the first time I did this, so bear with me. I'm Owen Williams. I'm one of the lead chemists for Two S Medical. Uh, we design pharmaceutical products, uh, approved by the state of Utah for medical usages and pharmaceuticals that are going to market, uh, for different large pharmaceutical companies. We partner with, uh, two of the, the state agencies, uh, as well as, uh, Utah State University, partnering with them for our research and development, uh, side of our division. Uh, our, our facility doesn't, uh, maintain any biomass. We create pharmaceuticals from, uh, you know, chemical compounds. Um, there's no odors, um, you know, 10 of our employees are doctors or PhDs, uh, two of them teach at the University of Utah. Uh, we're a pure medical facility that creates medication, uh, for pharmaceutical usage, and that's all we do.
Okay. So I noticed you didn't at any point say cannabis in any of that.
That's correct.
Are you making other products also? And this is just a, a portion of your business?
That is just a portion.
And because it's a portion, we need to have this added into the, into our?
In order for our company to pharmaceutically test tanic, excuse me, cannabis products and be able to utilize them in our lab, we have to have a state license, uh, from them to be able to do that. And that's why we're here today, sir, is to get the city's approval so that we're able to do that for the state.
Well, my, my, I guess my point is you test many, and.
Yes.
Products and compounds.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
This is one of your things you'll be testing?
Of our products, that we, we take the cannabinoids from the, the actual THC products and break them up and then synthesize them, uh, you know, just like aspirin. I, I was telling the last council that, you know, aspirin comes from a bark of a tree. In fact, the willow bark tree. We take that molecular makeup and then synthesize aspirin now in labs and pharmaceutically provide that to the public.
How, how long is your license active from the state?
Uh, it's yearly, sir.
Yearly, okay.
That's correct. There is 18 cannabis processing licenses awarded through the state lottery system, uh, back in 2000, and we're, we're one of those.
So you're subject to review and reapproval?
Yes.
On an annual basis?
24-hour surveillance, state, uh, state approval all around.
Any other questions?
Maybe, Mr. Chairman.
How many employees, how many employees will you have at the facility?
Uh, eight to 12, sir.
Eight to 12? And you said 10 of them are?
PhDs.
PhDs?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And they're perspective fields.
Mm-hmm, okay. Dave, sorry?
One of the things that helped me kind of understand how this might impact the surrounding businesses and area and that type of thing, can you describe, uh, any regulations that are placed on signage and that type of thing?
Oh, yes. I mean, because of the type of nature of, of R and D and also non, what do they call them, non-compete clauses, confidentiality agreements, uh, we're not allowed to have any type of signage or anything whatnot, just a, a small little, uh, identification so we can get deliveries and things of that nature. Our facility is monitored 24/7 through a state-monitored video surveillance system, as well as onsite security due to the sensitive nature and the types of products that we test and produce.
I assume that monitoring is with or without cannabis. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Great, thank you. You did well. No reason to be nervous. You did great.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Before we go to public hearing, I have one question for staff. Um, we talked about this a little bit in our work session, as you're, you're filling us in a little bit on some things. This is one of 18 licenses.
Apparently. I thought it was 12. I apologize. I misspoke.
The number doesn't matter. But, um, are the, and maybe the applicant can answer this, maybe I wouldn't, excuse him purely, of the other licenses that are given out, being as we're opening this up to one of our zones allowing this in, we could have others say, hey, they're doing it in Spanish Fork, maybe we can go down there. Are the other licenses similar processes? How did, what, what range of, uh, what range of businesses are we opening ourselves up to if we make this amendment to the, to Title 15? Do you know, or should we ask the applicant to speak a little more about that, or?
I would really like to take a stab at that.
Okay.
And I'd ask Mr. Williams to correct me, please, like, if I don't have this right. So I, I appreciate the question. Um, it's my understanding that, uh, of course, businesses can do other things besides process cannabis, right?
Mm-hmm.
Which is part of this gentleman's intention for what he would do here. But in terms of the cannabis processing facility, um, that's a pretty tightly defined, um, activity that can be performed within the provisions of the state licensing. So there's not a lot of latitude that somebody could do different variations of processing and that type of a thing and have it meet the state's definition of a cannabis processing facility. Does that answer your question?
Yes, but I'm wondering, so cannabis processing facility makes me sound like we're going to have bells of the subject, of the material that is being processed there, or a machine kicking out gummies off the other end. I don't, I'm wondering, does that open us up to something like that? Or is it going to be research for medical grades, uh, compounds like our applicant is processing? I'm wondering what the range is.
Yeah. Um, do you care if we let Mr. Williams field that one?
Love to hear it. If he, if he's got information on that, I'd love to hear from the applicant on this. Again, I'm not, so what he's described is, is, I think, uh, doesn't affect our community, is great, very professional handled. Um, and the others might be also. I just want to make sure that as we talk about it, we know what we're, we're.
These licenses are so hard to obtain in the fact that they, they're not giving any more out due to the state guidelines and legislature in which they passed. It allows, uh, you know, these operations to produce cannabis products, gummies if you will, um, under restrict guidelines. Um, all these labs that they have are strict white coats with glass. I could show you pictures. They're, they're, you know, FDA-approved, Utah Department of Health-approved for, you know, creating types of, you know, consumables for people. Um, the likelihood of anybody coming to Spanish Fork to build another facility like this is zero. Uh, the reason being is there's only two licenses left that are unbuilt, Two S being one of them.
Mm-hmm.
And the other license got approved for Northern Utah.
Okay.
But it would technically open up if somebody did want to, uh, bales, but they could construct small amounts of THC products in a, in a lab setting, sir. They absolutely could.
Okay. And is, just to, this maybe isn't applicable to this, but the licenses the state have given out have mostly been addressing medical, uh, uses?
Yes, sir. All, all for either medical uses, uh, medical research, or, um, the medical cannabis program that's approved here in the state of Utah.
Okay.
It's all, it's all medical related. It's not recreational use or anything.
No, sir. I mean, we don't sell any products to the general public. All of our products go directly to corporations and.
Right.
Places like that.
Great, thank you.
May I, Mr. Chairman, just kind of follow up? A little bit more clarity on that. It's been my understanding that cannabis processing facilities can only produce products that the end user is required to have a prescription to obtain.
That is correct.
Is that right?
That is, that is correct.
Because that's our state law.
That's my understanding.
So we can't be making it here, shipping it to Colorado or another state?
No, no, sir. We would lose the tax benefits of that.
It's much more highly regulated than, say, um, supplement companies or?
Yes, sir. I mean, not only our financials, but 24-hour video surveillance, uh, you know, quarterly visits by the state. Um, they take this stuff with the utmost security.
Right, okay.
Great.
As well as the clientele in which we deal with, because it's research and development, we've got certain protocols and regulation. We've got to have strict security so that these types of things don't get released out into the general.
I'm sure many of your products, besides just the cannabis.
Yeah, yes, sir. A lot of these, you know, cannabinoids are being used for Alzheimer's, Parkinson's, uh, they'll find some sort of derivative that, you know, sparks this neuron in your brain, and then we can go in and synthesize this and make more of it so they can test it and see what the real effects are when they give it to patients. Those types of, you know, medical breakthroughs.
Very good, great. Thank you. It's a public hearing. If anybody's here to speak on this, would love to hear your comments. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any comments?
I'll make one comment. I have, um, I have a friend who passed away who had cancer. Um, he, uh, after our state legalized use of cannabis for medical purposes, he was able to obtain a prescription for that. Um, that was something that helped him through the end of life. I think, uh, we recognize, or at least I recognize obviously that, uh, that the usage for medical purposes is legal here in the state. And I think, um, from what I heard tonight, I didn't hear any overarching concerns that I would have with, um, with this sort of facility in our community.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments? I'd entertain a motion.
Uh, I'll make that motion. Recommend for approval Title 15 I-1 for the cannabis processing facility. A second.
Motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Um, our next topic is also a public hearing. It is boundary adjustments. Early amendments to Title 15 concerning boundary adjustments.
Boundary adjustments, okay. So this comes as the state changed the way boundary adjustments are, the requirements surrounding them essentially, and they've created two different kinds of boundary adjustments. A simple boundary adjustment and a full boundary adjustment. So if you go to the next, so this is in state code, and this is essentially outlining what, uh, the land use authority has to determine if it is a simple boundary adjustment essentially. Basically that it's not going to affect the public right of way, any easements, public property, um, not going to affect wastewater systems, and it does not result in a lot or parcel out of conformity. So we, as the city, essentially just need to make this process a little bit easier so that we have some staff member who can sign off on the simple boundary adjustments. That way they don't, it's not like a legislative, um, process every time we want to go through doing something like this. This comes also as we've had the first one show up with us with a plat, um, and it's just held up the recording of the plat because we don't have anyone who can sign the boundary adjustment, or the notice of consent for the boundary adjustment. So if you go to the next slide, so this would designate the Public Works Director as the staff member who can sign the notice of consent, um, for the simple boundary adjustments. Um, we would still probably, just as internal things go, make this some kind of application, free application where it would still be reviewed to make sure it doesn't, um, go against any of the three items that we saw in the last one, any easements or public property or anything like that. So things would still obviously be checked by staff from multiple departments. But then, at the end of the day, Public Works Directors being, would be the person who would have to sign off on it. If you go to the next slide, this is the one that we, we got, if you were curious what they, what they look like. Um, but, yeah. Any questions about this?
So you're still working on the mechanism for this? You're, that will be something similar to this, and then we're designating the, uh, somebody in the staff to be the, the person that approves it?
Yeah, essentially. Yeah. And, yeah, they should be very, very simple processes because, once again, these are boundary adjustments where no easements are affected. So the only parts of town where I can think of that this would, this really works is parts that are not platted at all because anything that has a plat, anything that's subdivided, has easements on it. So that's going to need a full boundary adjustment. I guess I could explain that. The full boundary adjustment still goes through our plating process. So we're going to see a full plat for it. It'll get recorded with the county, go to the DRC, et cetera, et cetera. So this is just the other side of that, the simple side of it.
Great. Any questions? What is up there? No, I will open this up to public hearing. I sure opened, nobody came to speak about that one. But anyway, I will, seeing none of you, I will, nobody to talk about that. I'll close public hearing. Um, and then if there's no other comments, let's get a proposal on that.
I propose, um, that we recommend approval of the boundary adjustment, um, boundary adjustments, uh, involving amending the city's municipal code regarding boundary adjustments.
Good. Motion? A motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that'll go to the, to the council. Thank you. Phew. Item nine, um, there are two, uh, concept reviews that we're looking at from, uh, some applicants. These are not public hearings. Uh, the first one we'll hear from is the Cobalt Is applicant or staff going to address this first? Is this the applicant?
With the concepts we, I'm looking at, Dave, we usually encourage the applicant to go first and then staff can provide any comments.
Either way, I mean, I, I think in this one, I'll go ahead and just maybe set the stage context-wise. Um, this project here, I don't mean to steal any thunder, by the way, sorry, but, um, in fact, I'll stand up for this. Uh, I don't know that.
He's not stealing thunder, but he's got to stand up for it.
I feel a little better. Thank you.
I'm a natural.
And we appreciate you giving everybody the time to get your thoughts on projects like this tonight. Um, and I appreciate the council we got earlier to give you a little bit more ahead of meetings like this. So that's easy for us to do. We'll do that in the future. What we're seeing here with the color, um, that previously had been part of two projects, one that made it all the way through to final plat approval. That's called Wind Song, which basically encompassed the western part, half or so, of what's here. And we'd been working with folks to develop what we knew as Cobalt. So the name has kind of remained the same. For the eastern half, this is, um, a collection then of properties that have some significant development challenges. Um, lots of improvements required, relatively small area, and, uh, that's just part of the lay of the land. That's how it is. As we worked with, uh, the previous applicants and, uh, for example, when the Wind Song project was approved, I believe they initially proposed in one form or another, uh, to have this property zoned. I think it was R-16 was their initial proposal. And as we talked with the commission, um, that was in place at that time, they felt like as we were moving further east from Main Street, going from a townhome project to a project that was a combination of some multifamily, uh, and single-family homes, you know, less density than the townhome project of the west, um, and so forth, that gradually the number of homes per acre should decrease, which is why the zoning was changed to R-18. And I think that's what's in place only now for the, the Wind Song part of the project, um, not the other part. So really, for me, the, the big question tonight is how comfortable you would be with, instead of R-18 zoning, something more dense, I believe this project could be approved with R-16 zoning. Um, so that's really the question that, you know, ultimately, we're here to, to get some. the question that, you know, ultimately we're here to, to get some feedback on tonight, just to kind of test the water on, on your thoughts about R16 zoning.
So we have, for orientation, we're looking at River Bottoms and Volunteer Drive there?
Yeah, sorry, I should have pointed that out.
Yeah, listen to.
South Lane and River Bottoms Road, so Annie's Acres is under construction to the west of this site here, there is the one property owned, I think still by Miling Hales that's in between Annie's Acres and the subject property. I apologize for not, not starting there with that orientation, but can you maybe turn on the zoning layer for us too there?
So, yeah, so what is before you tonight, is that property that's currently designated or zoned R18 here and then this as well? Those two properties?
Does that make sense?
Yes, that's great, thank you. If you'd like, come up, please state your name and then just tell us about your.
Yeah, thank you for your time, my name's Tori Anderson, we're the ones that bought both properties, combined them, apparently they weren't getting along, I don't know if that ever got here, but we, we think it's going to be a great project now that we've combined them, the way they were doing it had its issues. But what are, yeah, what he described as R16, this as drawn is actually really close to R18, the builder that, that we're partnering with loves to build about this size of a lot, they don't like to go much smaller, but we're on the verge when we count it, we're going to, these are about 70, the way that's drawn is about 7,000.
7,45 average.
7,445 square foot average, some of the lots are, some of the larger lots are approaching half an acre and some are, you know, at the 6,000, so that's why we propose that, so we can make this project work because as he stated, there is a lot of, a lot of development for a small project like this, over, we have to do quite a bit of work along this south road, and then we met with Josh about this, they wanted, because of the way this currently sits, this intersection here is, is quite a sharp turn to the left, giving up some of our land to put a leg of road through here, and it is drawn that way, it's hard to see from this one, but put a leg there so that the people coming south have an easier right, right hand turn and make a little more space there, in addition to that, we have to, there's the canal is taking up quite a bit of space here and is a hazard for a neighborhood, so part of our plan, first part of our plan would be to go underground with that, with that canal, bury it first and then put the road through, and then, and then that will give us a little more space on that side as well for, for lots, so in our last meeting when we came here, the, and the comments that were given after, we did look at it to go to R18 and I, I did just a brief overlay of, of this one, if, if you got that email, so this would be a, a different change, I didn't draw the, the lots, but this would give us, we would lose a few lots, this, if we did R18, we would just lose a few of the lots that, that we drew, but then drawing with cul-de-sacs here, one of the comments made was this road here was too, too far to this intersection, they didn't like that and wanted to put another one over here, we drew it with it down the middle, so none of these are very far from an, from an exit, and I, I think it met the code before, but now it easily meets the distance, they don't, they don't want, I guess it's 600 feet or something from an entrance that they want, so we drew it this way, so this is kind of what we propose if we, if we need to go to R18, we're open to that, it's just that makes it a little tighter budget, if we could get approved for R16, we would probably build this, this with the size of lots that you see drawn in the background, the average would be pretty close to, if we do this way, we could get really close, 7,600, 7,700 square feet per lot, which is, which would have to be R16, but it's, it's not that far off, if that makes any sense. The other comments.
Can I just interject, sorry?
Yeah, please.
I, I thought I heard two things there, so if you went to this alternate plan, you would be able to comply with R18 or not?
I can, I just lose lots, which makes it, which makes it a little, a little tighter, so we're, we're asking, we would, we, we would like to draw it as R16, we're kind of here to get your feel on it, because if.
That's, that's what your ask is.
Yeah, yeah, if you're, if you're saying absolutely no, we don't want the R16, we would respect that and we'd draw it as R18.
And how many lots are you losing, do I see just two or four there?
Yeah, we lose four, likely four lots total if we go to, to end, and it doesn't, the way I see it when we draw it, it doesn't change a whole lot about the neighborhood we, we proposed to build, R16 or R18, some of the smaller lot, there's still going to be some of the smaller lots in either sa, in either scenario, we just have to kind of, on the cul-de-sacs and everything else, expand some of those, if that makes sense.
Do the, do the smaller lot sizes change much between, or are they pretty much?
So the builder that we have, and, and it's been mentioned several times tonight, the, there is a shortage of homes, so they're trying to build homes, affordable homes and, and a lot of homes, and their, their price point of the 6,000-ish square foot lots, they sell really well and they can build a really nice home on them and first time home buyers love them, they, they really like them, you know, some people prefer a small yard, some people prefer a big yard, this will have both, in, in any scenario we do it, the, so just to, to sell a mix of, if every lot is a quarter acre across the whole thing, you know, you, you have to sell them for a lot of money and they are harder to sell, but if you have some at the 6,000, which there's many people that prefer that, and, and they can get into a home a lot, a lot less expensively, and then there will be, of course, some lots that are really nice and a lot bigger for people that, that prefer a larger one, those people just, there just aren't as many of them that prefer a, a large lot, I mean, they prefer it, but they don't want to pay for it, if that makes sense.
So in terms of the, in terms of the type of houses you're, you'll build here, this allows you to build some that are smaller houses, is that right, or are they roughly the same size, or kind of give me a sense of what that looks like?
Do, do you still have the, the elevations that they sent, Alpine is the one we're, we're trying to partner with, so I'm, I'm the, we're going to develop the, the land and I have to give them something that they're willing to buy, and this, they'll go either way, they'll buy, they'll buy these from us, and these are the type of homes they want to build on all of the lots, they have options though, so the, the, the home buyers will be able to come look at, at all of the elevations, which they have dozens, and they could opt for a larger home if they wanted to, or the smaller ones, obviously, you're more limited on a small lot, and they'll have a few of those, and those are some of the elevations that they plan on building in that, in that community.
Yeah, initially it looks like a good variety there, I assume, these are all two-car garage?
Yes, yeah, and some threes, they'll have some three cars, yeah, on some of the lots, that's, it's a nice mix, they were really excited about it when we approached them because of that very thing, they, they would, every, every builder would love to build, you know, 4,000, 4,500 square foot homes with three car garages and a big yard and a fence, that just, there aren't as many of those buyers in the current market, there are a lot of buyers though that would buy a two-car garage on a 6,000 square foot lot, and they come, they, they, so they, they can provide these quicker and sell them a lot easier if they have a variety, so.
So this is your preferred layout of the property?
Actually, we do now prefer, after your comments, we looked at a couple of ways, putting the road through here, I think is better, I think it's a better feel, that is, that is a very long road out, and so moving that, just essentially moving this road over, I think might give us a little bit better layout, but we're, we're at the phase now where when we send these over to the architect, because they've already drawn it, as he said, Wind Song had an architect and Cobalt had an architect, so we have all those drawings, we're going to send it to one once we, after this meeting with our instructions, hey, this is how we want you to draw it, and they may change some of that a little bit and we'll present it again, we just kind of want the general idea of, of what you'd be willing to accept.
So, we're not making any proposals on this, you just came here for our, our opinions as individual commissioners?
Yeah, because we had comments back.
Back when we first came before, and each of these, each of these developments have came before, before us before, and we gave them comments at the time also.
Yeah.
Which is what Dave alluded to earlier, where we, we established at the time that we wanted to get away from the density of like the Annie's Acres development as we went east through this area up to River Bottoms Road.
Yes.
And that's why I think we had to zone that one, the, I believe, from the previous slide, our zoning, the one is R18, the other one is still RR?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't made that application yet.
Right, right.
We're, we're ready for, for that, that's at the point where we're ready for us to apply for that, we just wanted to kind of ask one more time for sure, you know, be honest with me, be blunt, if it, if it's, if it's trouble for you, we, we don't want an uphill battle to get another four lots.
So, so for me, it is a little bit of an uphill battle, we, we, I was on commission then when we went over that, I liked the R18 going through there, we, we actually had intended at that time for it to get gradually bigger as we went that, more to the east, and if you go to your, if you can go the, 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 the site map, yeah, one of the concerns that we had when we were going through our zoning was when we have lots that throw off the average, like you have, you mentioned you have some that are, are close to a half acre or maybe a half acre.
Yeah, the two corner ones, yeah.
That kind of skews the averages up in the size of the lots, so that's been a concern in the past, one of the developments we heard from earlier today, it took a lot of time, they had lots that were over an acre, that was throwing their percentages off and then much smaller ones in other areas, and we made them change that, so actually having the bigger ones, it helps your average size per lot, but there's only so much you can do with those.
Yeah.
Especially the way they're configured there, I would, my feedback, and just one of four tonight, I would like to see it be the R18, I think that would still, it would still be a great project in my opinion, it might limit you in, in some ways, but four lots is, shouldn't kill this project, I don't know where you're in at it, but it, it still should be a great opportunity for, for Alpine, after yourself, and be, and that would fit more in what we had in mind for that area, and then it'd be up to the council, of course, to say if that's what they have in mind for it.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's kind of what the feedback was last time and, and expected, just wanted to put it out there one more time.
I do like the, the, the renderings you brought in, if Alpine can continue on with those, those look good, I think they, they're very appealing, I like that a lot, I think that is, is supportive, we'd like to see there, or at least what we have talked about before, what we'd like to see in that area.
Good, good, and, and we chose Alpine for a bunch of reasons, and that was one of them, they're, they build in Daybreak, which is, you know, they, Daybreak likes their style and, and they, they have to bring some unique qualities or they won't, or they're not allowed there, and, and so they've been building there and, and we like that too.
Any, any thoughts ever to, I know we, we've seen a lot of people come before us that are teaming up with a builder on this, what about just having the lots for sale and having owners build their own?
That was our initial plan.
I, I'm not here to tell your business plan, I'm just curious, actually.
Yeah, that was actually our initial plan, without a doubt, that was our initial plan, we were going to go a little, a little larger lots and sell them for a little bit more money, these are, you can't really put basements here in this particular location, and, and so that, when we're researching, that's a little harder to sell a lot to bring your own builder, because a lot of people who are going to do that and go through the effort of finding a builder themselves and do it, they want basements and, and it's a little higher price point, and then the, the word got out very quickly, I don't even remember how, we had multiple builders call us, because this is a great location, they think it's going to sell really well, it's a very pretty area, it's close enough to the freeway, it's got a lot of stuff around them, and, and so we essentially interviewed some of them and Alpine impressed us with what they can do, and they, and they want to build those exact, and they want to go, and they, and they're also in a hurry, they want to get going on, on something, they want to have some, they need some lots pretty soon.
The reason I bring it up is I just, I, I, unlike my other commissioners, I don't have a lot of people make comments to me about what's going on in the city, that's one comment I've had a couple of times is, why can't I find my own lot to build on? So that's, I was just curious.
That's, yeah, great question, and, and full disclosure, that's actually why we, we, I, I own a construction company that does the development side, we, we build these for big companies, Meritage Homes was here earlier, we've done projects with them, Edge Homes, we work on the, the development side, that's what our company does, and because of that very reason, we're like, we can't find lots and, anywhere to, to bring your own builder, because the builders just, they're all over them, so.
Okay, thank you for answering for me.
Okay.
Commissioners, any other opinions?
I think I'm with Commissioner Mitchell, I mean, I, I like it, but I really like this, to stay with eight.
Okay, good, there was one other comment that I wanted to kind of get your take on, this is River Bottom Road right next to the property and, you know, driving out there, these trees are mature and have been there for a long, long time, one of the comments that was made that I wanted to find out for sure what your plant, what you wanted, was to develop this side of the road with curb gutter and, and, and widen the road a little bit, put a shoulder on it, which is, I guess, the typical standard what the city would want, that being said, I just wanted to make sure everyone knows that those trees have to come out if I do that, if I'm pulling, putting curb and gutter and widening that out, those will be gone.
Isn't, isn't that the canal right there?
We'll be covering that canal anyway, right?
But the canal is, is, the trees are on both, on the, mainly on the roadside of the canal.
Right.
And so I take the trees out, put a, a shoulder and curb and gutter, and then we'll bury the canal, and then the walking path, which is planned on there as well, we would probably put basically wherever, you know, whatever distance you want it from the back of curb, 10 feet or whatever you guys prefer for the path, and those trees, we'd plant new in that, in that park strip, but those would be gone, and I don't know.
Yeah, I could.
Personally how I would feel if I was the neighbors, because those are beautiful, they're mature and, and really nice looking and, and they match the rest of the, the river road, the road, so that's just something I wanted to bring up. We lose a little bit because of where the walking path goes, the walking path's going to be on the west side of the trees, nice walking pass, path with shade and, and mature trees, or we're going to have a walking path that's more like a developed, newly developed land with small trees, I, it's, to me, it's preference and I just wanted to get your take on it.
Josh, what would be required for the road there, just to make sure we're clear on that?
So this would just be our 60-foot residential right of way. I'm not exactly sure what the existing width is, but there would be some shoulder there, curb, and then the trail, 10-foot trail.
Yeah, to be clear, there's no shoulder there, it's a beautiful road, but.
Narrow road with no shoulders.
Yeah, I, probably adding 12 to 15 feet of asphalt and then the curb and then park strip and trail.
Yeah, and we.
All that work being done, the trees would be gone.
We, yeah, and we fully planned to do exactly that on the south side, that's not even up for debate, that's obvious, that's been the plan all along, but when, in the last one, they made comments on this, just looking at it, 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 it's a very rustic, nice looking area, so you're changing in the entire look of that area for the neighbors and, and everybody else, and up and down the road both directions, for quite a ways, there's not any curb and gutter, and so you're changing that look in one little area and it's a ways before, but it's also, you know, if that's the city's long-term plan, I, you know, you get it paid for during the development, that's fine, I, we literally are a concrete and asphalt company, so it is not a big deal to me, I just wanted to make sure, before I go ripping trees out and have, you know, everybody go, wait a minute, that's not that great that we talk about it.
I mean, obviously we have the requirements that we have in place, it's a beautiful road, but it is a dangerous road right now as it sits right now, I've personally ran on this many times and it is unsafe.
Yeah, and we could look at, maybe if you, if you wanted to look at a, a shoulder for the road, and maybe be able to get a shoulder in there without having to take the trees out or all of them, some of them are really close to the road, those would have to go if we did anything. But you might be able to go, some point in the middle, I'd be open to it, right now our plan is going to be drawn to be curb and gutter and everything the way it is, and then we'll put the, the 10-foot trail, do you know how wide, how far back off the curb you want that trail?
I can check our standard, I believe it's six feet.
Six, yeah, and so, yeah, and then. Six, yeah. And so, yeah, and then.
No, our master plan roads turn on South Lane and then go down Bradford. So this would just be residential.
Okay, we'll find out and have it drawn that way and then present it to you and maybe just have you look at the trees one more time. Any questions about that? Okay, thank you guys very much. We're gonna go.
You know, with the R eight, you probably have less pushback from commissioner or anybody, so.
Yeah, no, I, I, we figured. So we'll, we'll head that direction and, and draw it up and then get back with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you guys.
We'd like to take a break and invite Commissioner Warnock.
For the last, a commissioner that shows up for the last topic after three hours, really? For sure.
And I think it might have been Mr.
Welcome Shawna.
In the Development Review Committee meeting, the idea of maybe doing the complete neighborhood.
Either a master plan.
We've talked about that. Mr. Anderson, excuse me, said something when he started to present about kind of having diversity here and that sort of a thing. And I believe Alpine Homes has plans, for example, for twin homes on the shelf that they potentially could use.
Or they could leave them on the shelf.
Yeah, they could, which is why I'm bringing it up. If you were agreeable to perhaps having two, three, four lots, which I think maybe four might be how many? Eight thousand square foot lots that they could design into the project. And instead of building single family homes there, build maybe twin homes, for example, that in different ways would look like a single family home. If that's something that's a non-starter for you guys, then I'll stop maybe pushing the applicant to consider it. But this is not a bad, I think, bad sight or maybe a bad situation to consider using that. To accomplish a couple of different things.
Good point. I don't think that changes, my opinion I gave before, I, I would stick with that. I would not like that as much as what we have talked about before.
Big brothers. Single family, R one eight.
I think if we were talking the, the duplex, I'd rather go to the R one six instead of that. And again, I think actually in this case, I'd rather stick to one R eight. So it's just kind of my thoughts right there initially.
I think we have similar to that, just to the west of that. I mean, we have a density.
We have a, quite a bit of a higher density coming in the house, into the town, the city. So I would prefer the.
I think it's actually, it should do very well, but.
Okay. I think that's what I needed to hear. So I'm gonna stand down. Stop taking your time.
No, you're good. I'll, I'll just make one comment on that. We have, we have looked at that as an option. But Alpine feels like these will sell better. And that's why we're.
I think that's so great.
It's kind of their, their choice. So I think that we're all in agreement that, that's, they fill the product for that area. Any, any further closer to the road, the busy roads, we would be considering that for sure. This one though, I think it's, it fits this, this spot. So, okay, any other questions or?
Tori, it's eight feet to the trail. So if you go to S T five oh three, that'll be the cross section of the road.
Okay, and then a ten foot, okay. Perfect. All right, thank you.
Okay, I've lost my agenda. Shawna shows up and I lose my, oh, there it is. Again, officially welcome Shawna, Commissioner Warnock to the meeting. Shawna, we've had a, a, a good meeting. We've, uh, make sure we addressed your email comments.
Thank you.
As we went through it. So you've been represented through email.
Appreciate it.
Our last topic before the adjourning, which is my favorite topic, is a concept review for a seven bar ranch subdivision.
Thank you. I'll introduce this one for you.
I just like to sit here.
We have, is there one additional slide, Josh? Yeah, I like the ones with color. Uh, let's go back. Um, we asked them to come before you. This has been to the DRC twice. This is out on the west side of town. Nineteen hundred south, state route. Uh, I'm drawing a blank. Fif, no, it's not fifty-one, one sixty-four. Seventeen hundred west, um, general plan is currently in place. The last draft that you looked at, we did not anticipate changes to the general plan. So if we throw the general plan on real fast, there's a commercial presence on the corner. Medium density that goes up seventeen hundred west. And the remainder in estate density.
So Brandon, is this the same, this is the same area that Dean presented on?
No, Dean was.
For the north, isn't he?
Dean, well, Leland's to the north, but I think Dean, I'm trying to remember if he did come in on this one. I'm drawing a blank. I apologize. Oh, you can see the commer, the red commercial in the, in the, in the bottom of the screen. Mainly what we encourage, the, the DRC encourage them to come before you is the types of products that they'd like to do in the medium density. And then just whether or not it makes sense to have more of a commercial presence on the corner. It's just slightly smaller than what the bubble diagram kind of indicates. Let's go to the next slide. So this would be, oh, back one. This would be R one fifteen, um, commercial here. And then R three is proposed here with a couple of different uses. There are some changes that would need to be made based off of comments that staff has given them already, but largely just looking for direction on appropriate size of the commercial and then types of housing product for, for the project.
Can you go back to the map and show us where it is on the general plan map?
Yes. So this is the corner if we, and then the property comes up like this. So the east, east half is the estate density, R one fifteen lots. The yellow is the medium density and the red is the commercial.
And where is Modera compared to this?
Modera sits right here. And then Leland Meadows, Dean's project is proposed up here.
We can stay that way.
Anything else from staff before we hear from the applicant? Scott, Nate, or Corey, which one of you would like to address us?
Good evening. Hopefully we don't keep you too long tonight. Corey Turner, I'm one of the principals with Dynamic City Development. And the, we are the applicant on this, this particular project. Couple of things we, we just wanted to point out is that with this project, we completely conform with the, the general plan. We are not asking for any changes or modifications to that plan. And I do believe that the, the general plan that, that is on the table right now, there, there aren't any changes to this particular area. What we're trying to do at this point is to, to bring in a variety of housing types into the, it's a fifty-two acre project essentially and, and still conform with, with the, the requirements of of each zone and so forth. And, and so we are coming in with densities that are consistent with what is, is required, both within the zones that we're applying for changes to and within the general plan. So not asking for anything out of the ordinary. I don't believe on this particular plan, but wanted to, to make sure that we were getting your, your feedback as we now begin to, to move forward through the, the application process so that we don't go the wrong direction. Without, without some input from the, from the commission.
So what was the concern about the commercial lot? Are we increasing the size of it from what is generally shown?
Generally smaller.
It, it's generally smaller than what we've shown?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm, if, if we go back to the general plan, I, I just wanted to point out what we are showing here is about three, just over three acres of commercials. Is that right, Scott? Okay. And as you see in the Modera, which has already gone through at least preliminary plat, they're showing commercial just across seventeen hundred west from us. What was approved for Modera for their commercial, so that other little triangle down there is less than an acre. So we're proposing three acres for our, for our commercial area there.
They also had a second commercial area that was approved as well. So not just that corner. That was part of the discussion with Modera was the west commercial, which was bigger and deeper as a concession. And then back to your layout. A concern which doesn't meet the code is the forty-five hundred square foot lots. That would need to go up in size.
Right, and we'll, we'll make sure that we adjust that to.
Okay, I was just clarifying your comment.
Those were those lots right there, is that right?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
On the commercial and Brandon. And for everybody maybe, from my perspective, uh, whether it's three acres or four acres or five, that's probably less significant than understanding that the depths, primarily, I think the depth is in the right range of being able to fit the things that you'd wanna fit in there. So I, I think it almost takes a little bit more detail, even just in conceptual form to kind of see how you'd fit. Maybe some rows of parking and a building that is functionally sized, you know, for the kind of end uses you'd expect to get there, just as a thought. I think, I think that should guide probably how much space is dedicated for commercial as much as anything. And I don't know exactly what the Rocky Mountain power line being constructed along the south side of this property exactly does to what's usable and things. Um, I think it's a horrible shame that at least there's a chance that we're not talking about some out parcels where we would wanna see out parcels here next to the road. So I think that also maybe needs to be part of a little bit more study before, like that boundary between commercial and residential gets set.
Right.
Do we know?
So on that, it's easier to see on the lots to the right.
Yeah, it does show up.
That's the easement right there. So you can project that. You need to see the line right there, but so it would be parking. I know what you're saying in the layout.
There is no each.
But there will be.
Do we know where that's the power line?
Is that, there is no easement, but are we, it's south of the highway what we're talking? It'll be north, so it would be.
So it will go through there somewhere.
There.
We just don't know.
This space, for example, in these lots.
Yeah.
Is somehow being set aside to accommodate.
They'll be under the power line.
But Rocky Mountain.
Yes, not necessarily set aside, but large backyards that would, so there, you know.
To accommodate a future.
Restricted, yeah.
You don't have any, as far as what the, what will be on the commercial lot, you have any ideas of what that will be? Or you're not progressed that far along with your?
We're not that far along and quite frankly, we don't believe there would be anything for some, some period of time there. But we, we are proposing C two, which is general commercial for that.
Well, give me just kind of a, I mean, I know you're not far along.
It could be a C store, it could be a, a Jiffy Lube, um, some, some use like that on, on the three acre site. And the, you know, as we have requested input from our commercial development partners. They said three acres is adequate. This layout should be, should work for us. But without, without an actual partner and developer there today, you know, we're trying to make it as flexible for them as we possibly could.
You don't have a car wash lined up for them? Probably room for two.
But I think significantly, what we need to do is maximize the frontage along the highway. And so the additional acreage would have to go up, up along seventeen hundred, which is far less desirable from the commercial side.
Right.
You may have just addressed this, but I, I, I thought I heard, tell me about the lots that are between the, are the R one fifteen lots and the higher density. Did, did you guys just talk about this?
No, I was, actually I was gonna ask that question too. Is this what you're talking about Shawna?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The ones you said were forty-five hundred.
Yes, and then we would make sure that those conformed with the, that the minimums for that particular zone, the, the R three.
So that's a, so they're small lots with smaller homes on them. Like they're single family lot homes. That is something that's becoming more and more higher demand from people that I'm hearing. And I wish that you'd do the whole left side of that map, those, those size lots, because that's really, I keep hearing a lot of people saying.
We have had some interest in, in that. However, we, we thought it would be more appealing to have various housing types in there. Right now, we've got four in this concept, four different housing types, the estate lots. We've got the, you know, the six thousand, what will be six thousand square foot lots. There's a number of twin homes on the northern end up there and then townhomes. Now, uh, of course, a, a builder developer coming in is going to want to have multiple housing types so that they can have a broader range of, of products for sale in there. But there has been some consideration for doing, rather than doing the R three with MPD, just doing an R one six, but.
Yeah, I, go ahead.
Nate, could you come up to the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Could you come, they'd like to have you, so the public in general can hear your comments.
I think the other piece to it is trying to balance, you know, from a density side and maximizing what you can do to keep the cost down. There was this general census we had at the DRC. Try not to do more townhomes. We wanna reduce the number of townhomes.
That was my next comment.
So we've tried to reduce the townhomes, but that's putting pressure on the other homes to get the density up there. So that's, that's been the tension in the development. Is trying to keep the townhomes small, but then how do we, because we know that product that you're talking about is highly in demand. And so trying to do as much of that as we can. And, and still keeping the, the, the eight, the maximum units per, eight units per acre, which is allowed in that zone and trying to get as much as we can that way. That's been the tension on the project.
Yeah, yeah. Nevertheless. Anyway, my opinion.
No, that's what they're here for is to get that feedback.
I think, I, I mean, honestly, if you, if it were me, I would love it if you would switch your. I think that the twin homes are a good product that's also high demand. But do something about switching your twin homes down where your townhomes are and then put more of those middle sized, smaller lots in the area where your townhomes are. Because you do have, I mean, Modera, if you're looking at we're, if we're looking at inventory for the general area, we've got Modera next to it that's got all that. And if we want some more variety for our community, if we're looking community wide, what's really good for our community, that's what I would recommend.
And correct me if, if I'm wrong here.
I mean, you can do more density in that area by right, right? But I, that's just.
It's in the general plan.
In the general plan. It's not by right, yeah.
And it's a range, like, right? Like we talked about eight units to the acre. It's just as much five units to the acre. You know, the range is five to eight.
Right.
Et cetera. So I mean, I think that's a big part of the reason why we as staff wanna have conversations like this one with you guys. This is definitely on the upper end of the density range. So in terms of like the product mix and different things like that, everything's in play. I think you were maybe gonna comment on the zoning right now. There's no zoning in place.
Right.
So we're not talking about by right, but.
We, we've assumed correctly so, that this is the direction that the C sees us, but it is a general plan, which is not zoned. So they've entered into agreement. I don't know how you're holding the property right now, but the only thing they're by right now is RR. So give feedback on what you want and that maybe it works, maybe it doesn't.
Okay, well, there's my feedback. And I just, I, I mean, I'm still sensitive to the neighbors and the, and the historic neighbors in the area who I mean, I know that there are all kinds of conversations, but in their mind, they thought lower density was promised to them and it feels like it'd be nice to have some more lower density than townhomes. Cause we are quite saturated with townhomes and townhomes that are in the pipeline.
Obviously, we're talking the plan here, but I look and I see some places where there could be some changes here, you know, that, that just fit with this. And this also looks, I mean, I know it's a concept, but it looks very conceptual to me as well. It's like, you know, let's get the mix and go here as, as we go through that. So you know, I, I guess I'm not necessarily opposed here. I like what Shawna is saying, cause you know, obviously these type of lots, which I assume are the same things we're looking at here, are extremely compelling. It just feels like we have such a small number of those as well. But, you know, it looks like you got a lot of flexibility here to, to work with. something.
We do, being a larger project, we do have some flexibility there, but this kind of input is really helpful.
Yeah. I just wonder, though, with that flexibility, if instead of like, you know, this sort of creeping that way, we might see what we have here creeping that way too, you know what I mean? That's just kind of a thought I have.
Yeah. And our intent was to be more dense towards the southwest and start to then move with lesser density as we move towards the R115 and towards the north as well.
Right.
Which is why the townhome product is further south and west.
Will you just say?
Yeah, sorry. But to jump in, and to follow up on your thought, I think maybe I'm wondering a little bit of the same. And I appreciate that if you look at our general plan map, I think this comes really close to following it in a pretty explicit way. But yet, and frankly, I'd be surprised if a home builder or developer wants to do what I'm going to suggest, and like integrating the different housing types to where it's not such a stark contrast where one street's exclusively one thing, et cetera, et cetera. There are some good examples of developments around where I think that's been pulled off and has worked really well in neighborhoods now that have some age, you know, 15, 20 years.
Are you talking about like mixing the twin homes and the smaller lot, single family homes?
And the townhomes to some extent, maybe. Our master plan development code, for example, is really written to afford somebody a lot of flexibility that way, as if, you know, maybe we were to try to take the different acreages in the project that would correspond with our general plan designation, assign densities, and then to take those units and say, hey, come up with the best way to allocate these across the property instead of following rigid lines, which I understand why. I think this is the way that it is, but I don't think that's the best way to design.
We talked about it in the previous development with different housing types, but in some ways, you're basically saying, let's put, let's group these in different types of density throughout the project.
To some degree, yeah.
I think as we've been through many of these meetings, we'll have concerns when R115 is butting up against a townhome as opposed to an R16, there will be more of a concern there from the adjacent property owners.
Which is, in my opinion, always fabricated.
I think it's an opinion, not necessarily a fact.
There's not a real reason, which is why, so I'm going to go on for a second. This is the time to do that, before people buy and they move in.
And they know what they're getting into.
Is after the fact, right, you have the pressure that eventually becomes political to not do that. And I understand why there might be pushback from a builder that maybe likes the idea of, hey, I'm blowing out 20 homes on each side of this street, and it's identical, and I know how to market that and whatnot.
They take a talented civil engineer.
But what I do like here, I mean, I see what you're saying, and I can see, but what I think, I mean, I like your concept over on the right side, because that, those smaller lots right there are a good transition. And then you're, the top left of your map there, I mean, that's showing like you can have a mixed area. I'd love to see more mix of the smaller lots and the twin home lots. And, I mean, you could do some townhomes, but I'm not for townhomes right now, just because of how many there, because of our inventory in the city.
I could interject. I agree with Shawna's comments on that, a little bit different, but along the same lines. My opinions would be, I'd love to see these smaller lots get a little bit bigger, just have a little bit more square footage to them. And then an increase in the town, that in the twin home size, would be like my wish list. Other than, I like how we've brought up to other people before, I think you followed, you know those comments, or just followed the general plan. You're not asking to push the R115 any further to the east and crowd those boundaries. You've complied with that, that's good to see. I like the townhomes up against the commercial area. I wish, one of the things I have is along our main artery there going out Arrowhead or 8,000, whatever we call that, I wish we had more commercial along that. I would rather have that along the frontage of that than housing.
You're talking about the estate homes.
Yeah, the power line just still, I wish there was something we could do about that.
Yeah, I know it's not zoned that way, but personally, I would rather see commercial all along there.
Right.
Frontage on that.
It is kind of the key, I mean, it's about as good of a location for commercial as we can, right?
Yeah.
Well, as you project in the future.
For retail.
It's going to be more and more that way.
Yeah, because, because everything's on here to the east is more of the estate housing, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then what about directly to the north? That's.
These, the same.
It's the same.
Same general plan designations go to the north as well.
Yeah.
Any other comments for the?
Me personally, I would just say, put the whole thing in estate housing and call it good. Mind money.
Well, to the point of mixed densities, and really what Dave said, though, this is our chance to do actual planning and kind of have a case of project before, before there's a hodgepodge of everything, right? I like that thought, what that looks like, you know, there's some complications there, but I like that thought.
But we do that through our general plan. And this, this design follows that very closely. Now, what's inside of that R3 zone is what you're referring to, is how can we get that to look as pleasing along the lines of what Dave's talking about?
Because, you know, we've got this, you've got the Modera, whatever's going in down here with all that housing, that's a lot of, and, you know, what's they going to do across the street? Are they going to come in with all the commercial, retail, and still all of our tax base? It's going to, you know, it's going to, we're going to lose out because we've gone high density housing all along that road type thing, and.
Or low density housing, right, I mean, it's.
What's that?
Just residential.
Any residential, yeah.
Yeah. But, so that's why I would say if we could, you know, get more commercial along there, I think it'd benefit the city in the long run versus more.
We have a general plan that we're ratifying or going forward with now, that we have a joint meeting on.
This week.
In a week.
Next week, yeah.
So we'll discuss that. And let's remember, there's that power line here too, right? And that.
That's yet another factor, right?
Oh, yeah.
I thought Dave was talking about outbuildings. It'd be nice to have them up on the, up on the road.
Wouldn't it?
Very nice. Be great.
And part of the planning that we, you know, that the general plan, the current general plan reflects is going from, from lower density to higher density. And this is, this area is really seen as a transition. So I appreciate that you've got the R115 there. I just think that you can transition that with a little bit lower density on that, on that medium density and for that area. I like the idea of some mixed stuff, but.
As a developer, as a builder, do you, do you feel, I mean, I already said, we don't know exactly where the power line's going and what its easement's going to be, but we know it's coming through. Do you feel like those lots, if it goes right through, are they going to be harder to sell? Are they going to be hard to move?
They will be harder to sell, but we enlarged them, we made them be much deeper to accommodate the potential easement coming through there.
Is that the kind of thing, you would put a masonry wall up? Or is that you're selling individual lots to people and they'll do their own fencing? Or do you have to, do you put a, like, along the farther east development, don't they have masonry, don't they have some nice cast cement stone looking walls farther?
Where we butt up against another residential area?
No, where they come up against the road, up against Arrowhead?
Yeah, where single family lots.
Yeah.
Back on to the road.
Yes.
We would require a masonry wall.
Oh, you would.
With some other land uses, commercial, we wouldn't, obviously. And, you know, for example, with Modera, the plan there was to have some kind of an open fence versus a masonry wall for different reasons, but.
Do we have, in the, in the city plan, is like along here, is there any of the trail system going through here or?
Yep, yes. Yeah. I feel like I should mention one more thing and then shut up. But, for example, it was said that, if I had understood correctly, the general plan has this identified such that R3 zoning is appropriate. So was R18, according to the general plan. So back to the idea that there's a range. And I don't mean to slight this effort or this plan, but that's a reality that we don't always talk about now, right? And we have talked about the idea that things tend to gravitate to the most dense thing that the general plan calls for, but there are other things as well that could come into play, other options.
I think that if I, I mean, don't want to summarize Shawna's feelings, but I think Shawna's feelings and mine are kind of in the same way. You've maxed, you're at the top end of the zoning for that, for it to be something I'd easily move through, I'd want to see that come down some. It seemed like that density could move down a little bit in some areas. I think you're seeing, you'd like to see it much more than I'm seeing right now.
Yeah.
But reducing that a little bit. I don't know if there is any further direction we can give these guys to be, I mean, the idea is if they're going to spend money on a plan, they want to have something that comes through and doesn't have too many modifications to it, so. Anything else?
The lot.
You better say.
I know, I think they've done a good job with what it is, and they're following what we want. That's just.
Shaw, I like your feed, I like your feedback on this, Shawna. Like, I'd say, maybe I'm not to the degree you are as well of reducing some of the densities there. I like the mix. I like a mix. Granted, I know we have the plan as well, but I like some variety as well, when, when the variety option is there, and that's just kind of where I'm sitting on that. But actually, I see what's here. It's not distasteful, right?
If we look at the densities for Modera, it's close to 18 units an acre. We're proposing less than eight.
Yeah.
For this R3 area, then moving into 2.11 in the R115. So, you know, we are going less dense as we go further and further east.
And it's a place where we have infrastructure. We have freeway access. I mean, these people are still going to get a freeway really quickly if we can get that road improved, right? So.
You're a mile from the freeway.
Yeah.
Well, if I'm going to lose that argument, then.
No, no.
Then.
Don't give up.
I would just say, if there is going to be townhomes, then I would say less townhomes and more mix with the other product types.
And all looking for feedback.
Yeah.
We're not going on anything tonight.
Right, right, right. But I could see that.
Yeah.
I would love to see more of the smaller lots versus the townhomes or twin homes and that. I like, you know, I think that gives more chance, especially for people starting out by a home, they're living long term or not have their own place.
If, if those smaller lots replaced everything, would you be happy? I mean, I mean, I know this is just feedback, but if we're just.
Yeah, I mean, you'd, you'd lose the community area and stuff, but.
For me, for me, that comment, I would say no. I think I'd like to see more of it, but I think there is a place, a demand for.
All of it.
For the, for sell townhome product and twin home product. There's, there's, there's different levels in our community and our, that need that, and especially with the rising generation. They're struggling to get into homes. I think, I would like to see less of it. I like the smaller lots, like David's talking about, but I think there is, that's why I said earlier, I'd like to see it maybe those increase and the town, the twin homes and the town, the twin homes increase and the townhomes shrink a bit. But I, I would not want to see it all replaced. I would like to see the variation that we have. I really like Dave's idea. I just think of spreading it more, instead of in blocks, have it spread more throughout the community or throughout the development. I do think that does present some problems in efficiency for a developer and a builder to go through. So I get why they do it this way. So, I mean, my feedback. You have support come up to the podium, they want to make a comment, I guess?
So we're, we're not asking, because it's just the way the general plan's written, but to be honest, the preferred way, if you said, hey, what would we choose to do? What we would choose to do is continue the transition and say, that R115, our preference would be to take that to R112, because that then creates a far more gradual transition, because what's to the east of it is R1, R15. So we think that creates a better transition to take that to R12. That would give you the opportunity over in the R3 to say, we could take the density down with the R3 if you could pick up a little bit more over there on the estate side. But.
You're saying, come over here and shrink these lots a little bit, add a couple more lots along here.
Yes.
As you're moving back in.
Correct. And that's going to let you say, well, then, then from an economics of the project perspectives, then the economics of the project allow you to say, we can take the density of that R3 down a little bit more.
And change that.
But that's not the way it's written. That's not how we proposed it.
Well, but the way the general plan's written, you certainly could have a swath of R112 here as a transition. There's no, that would not conflict with the general plan.
It doesn't conflict with the general plan, but the economics don't work.
I understand that, but maybe we're not ready to help address the economics of making the project work too.
Understood. But then there's no project.
Maybe it's not time.
I actually am not totally against that proposal, though. If you're going to lower the density, if you lower the density on the west side of the project to have 12 in the middle, that's not something I'm completely against.
No, it's attractive.
But as.
But it doesn't work with the.
As Yobin said, though, it doesn't work for the economics of it from the developer's side.
No, what I mean is, I, no, I'm agreeing with the.
I would be against on that side. I want to keep the R115. But that's, again, my opinion versus yours, it's all good.
Well, and for me, it's just like the, the one middle swath. I'm like, that could, anyway.
It's, it's an abrupt, it's an abrupt move.
What you have drawn right now, yeah.
It is, because you're going from 6,000 square foot lots.
They bump up against each other.
Yeah.
And it would require, obviously, a general plan amendment to do that, I think.
So what, if you made, like, this swath, R12, and move these smaller lots along here, would that be feasible?
We'd have to look at that, run it through economically, see if it, if it could work that way. But certainly, we like that transition from, from higher density gradually to the lower density.
Yeah.
I'd be interested to see that.
Okay. We'll take a look at it.
If you could do lower density in the, in the other part of the.
As I look at that, I just look at this, think, there goes my neighborhood.
You'll find new friends.
What's that?
We'll make you some new friends in there.
Yeah.
The only comments.
I might move into one, I might move into one of the townhomes, sell the big lot and just move to town.
See, then you can stay in the same area, stay in your neighborhood.
Be nice.
Okay.
I'm as close to you as you.
What's that?
I'm as close as you.
I know. I was at your house the other day.
Any other feedback?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you taking our comments, and hopefully we'll see what you have, what you come back with.
All right, thanks.
Thanks. Our next item is adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you so much. I have a motion.
Second.
Motion second, all favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.